Make sure everybody being here this evening, this is our visioning and work session for the coming fiscal year. We did hear from Mr. Jenkins and then Mr. Lanyon. Mr. Jenkins isn't going to be here, he's out of town, and then Mr. Lanyon may arrive a little bit late. He had some pretty important testimony to give today at the legislature. So again, thanks for being here. I've been in this building before, but never been here for meetings, so this is really a...
Yeah, this is nice for...
It's kind of like vision goals for our council chamber someday to have a little bit more technology friendly, a little bit more comfortable. I tell Holly she keeps goofing up by making it more and more comfortable, like we need to make it less comfortable.
Right.
But that's a story for another.
I'll work on that.
So anyway, so we just got out the agenda earlier.
Snacks are subpar.
What's that?
The snacks are subpar.
Yeah, right.
Right.
So we're going to go through these items. This is a work session, so it's meant to be more of an open discussion. Having done this many, many times, the important thing is, if you will, you'll see this in the slides as we move through them, they're mostly on a high level. We don't want to get too far into the detail of things because, you know, we could spend a long time here talking about like how much we think the water main on Lloyd might take. And this guy will tell you, and he'll take you through it, but we don't want to get too far into the details on that. Because a lot of these things we've covered in a general sense, and now we're just moving towards really for a lot of them, the execution phase. So hopefully, technology won't fail. Good. So there's our agenda, we handed it out the other night. There is another portion of the agenda towards the end where we'll have departments give just a brief overview of where they're at and some things. And then also, we'll have an open discussion at the end to pick up anything that we want to add into further or council members have no ideas. So the top three items here, you know, from my opinion, there are the things that are probably have been, well, the first one and the third one probably have been the most important for just about every community that's similar to ours over the last 115 years, you know, and they kind of go hand in hand, you know. Housing and then utilities and making sure that utilities are functioning the way they're supposed to, and they're providing the, we're providing the service for our residents that they pay for. And then housing, that's an international issue, and we'll dive into that a little bit as we get a bit later. But employee retention and recruiting, that's somewhat of an emerging issue for governments and emerging over the last five years, and we'll talk about that. So to me, and no one to me is any more important than the other, but these are three things that we really mindful of as we move into the fiscal year. So we'll start with utilities, and again, in a very broad sense, you know, we want good utilities because that enhances the quality of life. And I really think that we do a good job now of capital improvement planning. I think that we've laid out the plans for water and water mains moving forward. We certainly use best management practices. And we'll talk a little bit in the next slide about some more project details, but that's really sort of the first part to improvement is having a plan, which you have, and Scott has plans among the plans among the plans that have been presented, I know, different times. I think one of the last visioning sessions was completed, I think it was 2017? Does that sound right? Scott?
I want to say it was 17 or 18.
Yeah.
Because we didn't have one in 19, the goals kind of transferred over to Corey.
And that was very, very detailed and really helped, in my opinion, set the stage for, you know, the money that we got from the federal government to pick the projects. So we've done a lot of that good work on the front end, you know, and continue to do that. Obviously transparency in our utility system. We want to continue to reach out to the public and obviously communicate what we're doing. It's one of the reasons we're filming this tonight, so folks can watch it afterwards. When we start projects moving forward, like the open house we did have for Putnam Street, we want to continue to do those things. Data collection, I mean, we want to, you know, a lot of our data is, you know, very specific as far as flow and, you know, the water plant, the wastewater plant, but we also, you know, kind of unofficially collect data on different parts of town where the water quality maybe hasn't been its best, and so we monitor that, keep track of that. And then reporting is just something that we're required to do for both water and wastewater, and we'll continue to do that. So when we really put in place those first two things, it really drives the public trust, and then we get, you know, better and improved quality of our utilities. So that's sort of the high level view of utilities. Any questions on that stuff? I mean, it's fairly basic and it's fairly perfunctory, but I just want to reassure all of you, that's our mindset when we look at utilities and look at projects. I'll give you an example, you know, best management practice. The original Tetris Tech study, you know, had options for the wastewater plant between, well, none of them were like affordable, I'll just say it, but, you know, it would be, a lot of communities just kind of take what their consultants tell them, and we certainly aren't going to do that. I mean, best management practice for us is making sure that we have the rate base and the customer base to be able to have an affordable system. So, you know, we can't have, you know, 100% rate increases for wastewater because that sets itself great for the next 15 years. We don't want to do that. I mean, there's always a event horizon that you're trying to gauge, partly driven by housing and potential for new housing, new development. So, any questions? Yes?
Well, everybody knows about the council in the 70s that tried, they were, they were paying interest loans and a loan.
Yeah.
And then that loan ballooned while I was on council, and we had no choice because of how the water system worked, but the rates were raised, I think, what, like 7% three years ago, something like that.
Something like that.
And then in 2017, that was paid off. That's a good idea, it's a good example of something that matters to me.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, the, I can give you many examples. In Michigan, their township that was adjacent to the last community I lived in, they built a water and wastewater system kind of out of spite. They spent like $10 million on the water system and $12 million on the wastewater system on the IFCOM because they thought all this development was going to happen, but didn't happen. So then it was a township, they ended up, their residents paid five and a half mils. Also, they basically paid the same tax rate as the city because they don't have any customers. They paid that mileage even though they, that, most of them don't get water in the sewer. So there's a lot of horror stories and a lot of things that you can avoid by just, you know, having a good plan, making sure that you're collecting data regularly, and then you're continuing to keep the public informed and build the public trust. So, a little bit more, a little bit more on the specific side. We didn't have a, we did have work sessions on water and wastewater. We talked about the project plan for wastewater, and we still need to refine that more for council. We also had rate studies for both of those, but in the coming fiscal year, we will have a wastewater plant project plan, and that's really the precursor towards looking at whether it's applying through the state revolving loan fund or through rural development to do the necessary projects plural at the wastewater plant. So we'll have that in the coming fiscal year, and a lot of that will actually kick off before the end of this fiscal year. Water main projects, we talked about that at length, and we're in the, in the design, final design phase for that. I don't know if you want to add anything at this point, but...
Well, actually, we're shifting from the alley to Lloyd Street because of the timing of the project and trying to get that done this year. There's a lot of stuff with the alley back there, that's all I wanted to say about it, but the different priorities we're sticking with, Williams, but we've had to pivot a little bit because it's very complex, turning everything up in that very narrow area behind the alley. And we've got some coordination to do with consumers and other utilities. So that message is going to start going out that we've made that pivot. We kind of alluded to it before that we might have to do that, and we didn't, so we did.
The Lloyd Street neighborhood is happy for that?
They don't really know yet, except they know a project is coming. Their thinking is coming 2024.
Yes. So does it see those survey stakes?
Yes.
Gives us hope.
Do we see any issue with going with Lloyd, any more traffic jam up on Putnam with the other side going at the same time, just because there's going to be construction traffic going?
Not necessarily, because the other traffic is north of the bridge, and Lloyd is parallel to Wallace. Wallace is a natural feeder for the other traffic.
And then, so as Scott said, we're going to pivot a little bit, and we've got a slide next that shows us the projects we're looking at. But the water main projects, that's a huge improvement for quality of life. I mean, that's one of the key issues that folks, the residents that reach out to me have concerns about water. I've got the water jar to prove it sitting on my parking cabinet. And then wastewater distribution system improvements, some of those are happening. That's actually, it's like one of the lift stations. But, you know, a key there is we're really, and this drives back to the wastewater plant project, plant project plan, is trying to, where we can eliminate I and I, which is inflow and infiltration, and that's stormwater or rainwater getting in the sewer system. And so by fixing some of those key points and raising some of the lift stations, getting them above the flood plain and out of the, not even get out of the flood plain, but out of the floodwaters, that can really help drive a, you know, a smaller wastewater plant future for us. Because right now, we, and that's fairly common when you have a, the flooding here is, I would say, is uncommon. This is the first community I've worked in with an actual river. I've worked in a couple of places, creeks, we didn't have the flooding issues, but it is fairly common where you have a major water source like that to have a major I problem.
So is your comment about the quality of the water, were you saying that there's still issues with the quality?
The quality isn't the distribution system. I think the plant is functioning as intended and as it was built.
Right.
But it's really, I mean, what's some of the vintage of the water mains in the systems?
I'm going to go back to 1905.
So the water leaves clean, but then it picks up crap in the pipes, and that's still going on. That's probably...
Yeah, we have about 5% of the water mains are still in that scenario.
Okay.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, 15%, 15%, but 25% of our customers are on that 15% of the water mains. It's five miles.
Okay. Thanks.
And this is, this is not a new slide, I pulled this from Scott's presentation earlier in the, well, late last calendar year, and it talks about, you know, the phasing. So we have Putnam going on, and that's an M down project, but we are doing water and sewer there. HUD projects, we have Williams. This still has the alley out, but we're going to just trade those out. And then as we move through time, we're going to be, you know, making pretty significant improvements and get back to having good data and, I think we pulled this big spreadsheet out and showed everybody, but if anybody ever wants to go through the fine detail, you know, if you're really, really having trouble sleeping, you know, or this summer, you know, we have all that daylight, you don't really know what to do. But we have very, I will tell you, we have, the data we have is pretty impressive. Unfortunately, a lot of it is, yeah, this is bad, this is from 1905, or, you know, this crossing, the Red Cedar Crossing is really critical because if it fails, it fails, and then we're in a whole heap of trouble. So, but the good news is we have good data on these projects, and so that's how we were able to elevate these to the top. And so with all of these being completed in the next couple of years, we're really going to improve our system. There also is a side benefit of improving the street network, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. But these, these are like for the physical, our like, what I call like our city physical impact on the community, this is the most important thing we are and should be doing in the next, you know, three to five years. Doesn't mean we're not going to do other things like parks and things like that, but this is the deep, deep thing we should be focused on. And I think all of you know that, and I think you've all been heading on that right track and not really, you know, beget the submission for, through representative's office. There is another round of funding because, you know, Senator Peters now is up for election, so we're getting communications from that, and we'll, we'll do our very best. It's just, it's a super, as you know, it's a super competitive race, and where we can pick up that kind of, you know, really large pot of money, we'll certainly go after it when we can. So, I'll pause for a second. Anybody have any questions about, yeah?
Yeah, I do have a question. Do you have an opinion on whether the water treatment plant should have been built when it was, or whether it should have been built after fixing the pipes?
So, I guess I don't have an opinion. I mean, I would defer to Scott to give you an answer, but I know that the waters, the water, the old water plant was in pretty critical shape of needing replacing.
We didn't have an old water plant, we just had the wells.
There you go. So...
So do you think we made the right decision doing that?
Personally?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
We were able to have an immediate impact on lots of the system that had mains that were newer vintage from like the 70s to the present.
Right.
Where we've had the problem is the stuff that was pre-1970s, but when you look at the percentage of the customers, you were able to make a big increase pretty quickly, or a big improvement, I should say.
Okay, I always thought that, but I've had a couple of comments from the public asking what I just asked.
Yeah. I have had multiple people say, yeah, it got better. And now, you still have people say, well, I still have crappy water, but when you figure out where they're at, how we just find out where they're at, and then you can usually piece it all together and go, this is why, it's the distribution system in that area.
So prior to the current plant being built, what was the treatment of the well water? Just iron removal?
No iron removal. We just put a chemical in called phosphate to try and keep it from coming out of solution and trying to keep it to pass through, but it's not super successful, and then we added a little bit of chlorine for this infection.
So Scott, once we get through these next three to, three to four years of these projects and replacing the water mains and everything, I know we're still going to have to treat the system because we're still going to have to do flushing, correct?
Yeah.
That will never go away.
Yeah.
Will we see significant difference and will the, will those neighborhoods notice that, that, oh my gosh, I don't have to run my water before I do my laundry? I mean, and that's the education of the community, and that's what I'm asking, so that we make sure that we're preparing them, these projects are coming, but then there's going to be that, that, the other side of the project going, your water quality is going to improve, and we have to be able to answer them. We still have to flush the system because I'm sure people are probably thinking, why are they still doing that? If I just got new, you know, water mains down my street, why? And so I want to make sure that we're ready to be able to tell that side of the story.
The flushing is normal best practice for any water system?
Okay.
You have to refresh the water in there, you do still have some sediments and that type of thing you have to clear out.
Okay.
We have gone from flushing more than three times a year when the plant first started up, to several years, three times a year, to the last three or four years, we've only been doing twice a year.
Okay.
So that has improved things. There's only a few spots in the system where we might have to leak some water, like William Street, the type of thing, but it doesn't require a whole flushing of the system. So our wasted water, because that's a cost to us as well.
Right, yeah.
That has gone down, I track that.
Okay, good. Because I know that gets answered too.
Yep. Water quality goes, you know, we, we work with folks even in some of the areas that have newer water mains that have been replaced already, but the service going into their house, you know, we do the line snaps and things like that.
Right.
So there still is residue in that part of the plumbing. You can never guarantee that all issues are gone because it's tied to not only the city's part of the system, but the homeowner's part of the system as well. But it makes that battle easier as we get further into this process.
Right.
I've had people on the neighborhood over there by Cross and Fulton and all that stuff that had horrendous problems. They're not all gone, but since we did the Middle Street project and we replaced the main down Middle Street that was feeding those, we found some issues. That got fixed, and now I've had some people tell me that things have been better since then. Not all done yet, but it's improved for, we've gotten that feedback.
Okay, good. Yeah, I just want to, I want us to be able to tell that other side of it, like, yes, we're still going to flush. Yes, you still may see some, you know, sediment in, in the water coming out when we do those treatments, but it is going to improve and you're not going to have, it's not going to be as bad. So, thank you.
That last connection from the main to the house, you need to check those, just check for lead. How many are left on that?
We have gotten through, and I would say probably about 95 or more percent of the system of checking exterior to the hall. We're transitioning, or we're finishing up some of this stuff in some of the, like, the apartment complexes and that type of stuff, or a few down Grand River Avenue here. And there's been a few in some neighborhoods at the curb stop is like a concrete driveway. So we have to work with those individuals to check those because we got to tear up concrete and waited on those. The internal work, we're starting to do that with, we've been doing it with meter changeouts, and then we still have to do a few more beyond that. We're going to be all done with that by the end of 2024.
Good. No more.
No more.
That'll be good. All right.
We only had two lead services we found last year that had to report.
Good.
All total, we've only found 12 in the entire system.
That's fantastic.
So again, that's a, that's a high level view of utilities, and one thing I want to underscore, like, all of these ski issues, they're, they're, we're going to see them every year, we're going to talk about them every year. I mean, we have a, in April, we'll talk about rates for the coming years, specific, we'll have a specific section of the city council agenda to talk about water and wastewater rates. So this isn't like a one kick of the can discussion, this is just, as I said, this is the, our most critical impact to folks is their water, you know, and the wastewater obviously, I was going to say byproduct, but that'd be a horrible thought. So, any more thoughts on utilities? Okay. So as you know, 65% of the statistics are made up, so, you know, the joke I prepared didn't go over very well.
Is that true?
Yeah. So this is the Senator for Local State Urban Policy, and they are the survey people, those of us who are, and then local government administration now, they survey just about everything. This is their most recent survey, can't really see it the best here, but what it says, it's just the emerging concern about local governments for figure three A is recruiting employees, and that's really, you know, it's gone past the about 50% mark to like the 65% level of concern. And the same thing, about the same thing for retaining employees. And the comparative is from 2017, so in the last five years, because we're at historic low unemployment rates, which is a great thing for, you know, the state and for the country, but governments are feeling the effect of attracting folks to work and then keeping them. So this is a critical thing for us, it's probably the most profound and at least right now, and we'll talk about that in a second. So there is, I can tell you, having been, you know, worked in five different communities now, there's no one magic formula to get people to come to work for you. There are some common themes, and listed some of these here. On the retention side, just rewarding people for longevity, having them, allowing them a flexible schedule when possible, enhancing the training, and frankly, just showing their appreciation. I think we do a good job with most of those things right now. For recruiting new employees, we got to make sure that we're market rate at a minimum, not minimum wage, we have to be market rated a minimum for attracting employees for wages and benefits. We have to make sure that we offer training incentives so folks feel like, you know, oh wow, if I come work there, they're going to take care of me and teach me new skills. And also where we can provide opportunities for advancement, those are, those are critical ones, and especially when we look at our police force. We don't have a big organization, and then we don't, we're never going to have a force of 50 people, but for us to get quality people, we're going to have to have some opportunity or some expectation that they may be able to do something, you know, just be patrol officer. And the most critical for all of these, you know, stable political environment, communities talk, I mean, when there's an opening, if there's a police chief opening in this state, everybody who's interested can find out why, and even if you're not, like, right, there's, I don't know, a handful of like city clerk jobs open right now or city manager jobs. You can Google Manchester, those in Manchester, and you can figure out in 30 seconds why the jobs open. And if you're looking for a job, and if you're somebody who wants to, you know, hey, you know, I like where I'm at, but maybe I'm a deputy clerk and I want to go be a clerk somewhere. Oh, I like that town, oh wow, their council's nuts and they fight, and their meetings are seven hours long, and they don't like each other, and they've been sued three times. So having a stable political environment is critical, and I'll tell you firsthand, one of the reasons I came to work here or wanted to work here is you have a stable political environment here. You cooperate, we don't always agree, but that doesn't, always agreeing to me is, you know, on the pathway to not being stable at some point. So I can tell you, Chief Young probably feels the same way in time, since we're the ones who come back more, most recently, and then, you know, Scott and Holly are, you know, employees that have been retained here for a while, so that's good, so we have kind of a good mix. But for us moving forward, we're going to have to enhance some of the things we do, and it has to be affordable for the community, and we're not talking, yeah, you know, we're not Oprah, and everybody gets a new car, you get a new car, it's not going to be like that. But we're also in a collective bargaining environment, so this is a little bit light on specifics because we're moving into contracts expiring for police and for public works here in the coming year. But when we get to those points, I mean, all of those things, if there's an incentive package that I think that we need to do, and I don't mind sharing this one, for public works and also for patrol, we have a wage table, and the bottom two on that scale are about the same as what you can get like at probably Walmart or McDonald's. So that really needs to drop off, and we need to consider adding at the top of that scale. I'm not going to say how much or how many more staffs, but those are things that we need to add. Because we are a small organization, you know, it's scalable, if, you know, if the base salary for, I'll just, I'm going to just use, we don't have a deputy engineer, but if we had a deputy engineer, which, not going to have, but if that, if we enhance it by a thousand bucks, it's one person. So if we enhance, you know, the wage table and police for $1,000 per employee, it's $6,000. I mean, that's worth it, and it should be worth it to all of us, because if that's the difference between having, you know, cops or not, I mean, we have, that's an easy, easy bargain to make. And it's still, we can afford it within our existing income structure on the general fund side, so. But all that will be presented to all of you, and you know, we'll talk through it, but, Chief, I don't know if you want to talk about, you know, some of your more recent, like, recent experiences with like recruiting and just in the general sense?
See, I thought I told you everything I knew in the council meeting earlier today. But there is one more thing.
Right, right.
And so, because as you know, this staffing is a huge issue for us, and the, our reserves are a component of it, and the mayor knows because she was a reserve, so we could not exist without that. Today, I had a conversation with a young man, 20 years old, who was doing his bribery law, get to be a reserve, and he wants to be a Williamson police officer. So I haven't gotten him assigned a dotted line yet, but he's, we're starting a background, and he wants to go into the January academy. So it's not an immediate fix, but it's down in the future. And so with our reserves, not, not that the mayor and I are old, but we're looking for younger people in there for a career path, and the reserves want to start a cadet program because to get them eye to eye, so before they get into college, because our reserves start at 21, we need to catch them young and do that. So I think that's positive for the long haul. This young man, I told him, he's got opportunities all over the place, but this is the environment he'd like to be.
Can I ask you a question? Do you guys partner with any of like LCC's law enforcement programs or even where I am at, the Wilson Talent Center's law enforcement program?
We do. The challenge is, LCC, they're all sponsored. If they're not bought and paid for before they get into the academy, they don't exist anymore. Used to be, we'd go in there and do presentations, and there are people there.
Yeah.
Those days are done.
Yeah, I mean, pretty much when I was at LCC, every cadet was sponsored by a department. I mean, we had, we had Tyler in, but he paid his own way. We did not sponsor him. We know we sponsored Chad. But do we have the ability to bring anybody that's in the CJ program in and start them as office staff or, or something, that to help, you know, with Bonnie with like reports and, do we have that ability to bring any cadets in? Or, or CJ students that maybe aren't in the, in the academy?
Sure, I think they should be doing is looking at our cadet program and our reserve program, not in a paid fashion.
Okay.
Bonnie is our most valuable commodity.
Right.
Over the chief. I mean, you're the head of the department, she runs the department, and I tell city manager this, you can replace me, because there's a lot of good chiefs out there, and so she's a valuable commodity. But you're right, that's what MSU is doing to this, there are new people coming on, they're bringing them on and moving them around through their departments within the police department and get them exposed before they go to the academy, and they're paying them all the way, and they're paying them through the academy.
Yeah.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
So through the Wilson Talent Center, where I work, there's a junior and senior high school program for law enforcement, and there could be opportunity on many levels with that program where you could interact with some of these high school kids that, that are heading down that pathway?
Let's talk more offline about that, I would like to know.
Yeah, there's even some, you know, some accelerated options where we have like work-based learning opportunities where they can come a day a week instead of school. There could, there could be some avenues there.
Absolutely, and that's the idea, we gotta catch them.
Yeah.
And that's what I do with them, write them along, because I try to explain to them what kind of, of community we are. There's this stuff, and like throwing them in a car, writing along with the officer, to see what they do on, on a regular basis. So, let's follow up some more.
Yeah.
Chief, how many applications have you received for part-time, full-time, since we opened up the positions?
So, we got three initially, and two of the three took other jobs immediately. The third one did not respond with an application packet. Um, I recently got a fourth one, that I was a little excited about, but it was a young man from La Bona, graduated from, uh, Wind County Regional. I asked him, so what departments are you applying for? He graduated last November, and it was Dearborn, Ann Arbor, Reno, Vine, Westland, all departments that are nothing like what we are. And, and so I asked him, so what are you looking for? Why are you talking to us? And, and, um, and he sounded excited about it, because it's, we're small, it's a great environment to start, learn, we, we do the gamut, but he got time to work on it. But he hasn't returned the application packet. And so, but that's, I'm expecting that, that's the environment we're in right now. So, that's why I was excited about going today. And so we gotta kind of create our own destiny. But I, I like your suggestion.
Yeah, that's a really good one.
So, if this is something you don't wanna get into right now, you totally get it, and shut me down. I'm totally not being offended. But we've done some things over the last couple of years while Jim was here, changed the uniforms, 'cause the guy, you know, they thought the guys liked it, new fresher uniform, changed shifts from the eight hours to twelve, so things like that, to try and make it a more attractive department they'd wanna stay in, and, and things like that. Is there any other things like that you can think of, and try and, with some of that retention? Is there anything we can, obviously, we're not talking pay scale right now, we're doing that later, but any of those things, like, you know, we brought in tasers, guys wanted a taser, any, any, anything like that?
I, I asked him that, and they're happy. And so those improvements have been well received. The biggest challenge is, they want some support. The, the young man that was at the council meeting, he's expecting a baby. He wants to have time on during that time. And we're fully expecting we're gonna lose another officer. And he's worried about that. I said, don't you worry about it, you just go do your job. That's my, my worry. And, and so, right now, um, I mean, it's, it's, the pay is one of the issues. The quality of life at the department is another, and I'm happy where we're at with that now. So right now, it's, it's the staffing, because they worry about that. There's not a second officer out there. When we were fully staffed, they already had an overlap. And, and so with everybody else having a budget cut, there's not as many deputies out in this area, there's not as many meridians. So they're more by themselves now than they, than they have in the past. So, I, I get what you're saying, but...
No, I get it.
Is, is there anything else we can do as far as other avenues where we can promote our openings? I know I've shared it, I know some of the other council members have shared it on their Facebook, but is there anywhere else, I mean, are we, do we have it on MML? Do we have it, you know, have we sent it out to the, the academies and?
We've, we've got it at MECP. We have not sent it out to the other academies, because all the academies are the same vote, LCC, that they're all sponsored people. And, and so, and you, you look at, there are just, I don't know what department is not on there looking for people.
Okay.
So, um, so it gets to be a cost factor of how many places do you wanna go, what's the return gonna be, I think, on that. But I, I hear what you're saying.
If, if a retiree were interested, what is the process for them to be MCO certified again?
So they just need to come to talk to me, because it depends on how long they've been
Retired, off the job, okay.
It depends on how long they were at the other spot, and so it, it depends on all that. We, we would love to have that, except the challenge we're having with that is, everybody is talking, just like the city managers, how do we retain these people? The sheriff's office has a bundle of people that I would love to go into now. They're doing a drop program, so they can retain them and bring them back and keep them longer. And, and so the pool of retirees that we used to have in the county just don't exist, because they are in the same boat as, as we are.
All right. That's a tough one.
It is. It affects the world.
If we just raise the pay rate right away, is I can help you?
It will help me keep, stop the bleed.
What else to stop us from doing that?
City manag, city manager, I, uh, in discussions, and it's all the word, the collective bargaining comes in, and so.
They'll present something to us, so we can vote on it as council.
Okay, good. Yeah, but I, I like that thought.
It's one, it's one of the tools, but it, it's not the only. And, you know, the other thing is, you know, being a, a smaller department, it's, the, the advantage there is, you, it's, you can one at a time it with, with people. And what I mean by that is, for our recruitment strategy, people that are local will tend to stay. And, you know, we're gonna lose an officer, because they drive a long way, and, and there's jobs everywhere. So if you get a comparable job, and all you're doing is eliminating an hour commute, then, you know, most reasonable people will do that. So that's part of the, you know, the recruitment strategy moving forward is when we can, people that are, are more local. But it's, it's a tough, you know, we're, we're in a tough competitive environment with Meridian Township, you know, MSU, Michigan State Police, Incan County, DeWitt Township, City Lansing and East Lansing, those are all reasonable-sized departments compared to what we have. But, um, but, um, uh, you know, I'm confident working with Chief Young, that we can, we'll make it work. Um, that's a great lead, the Wilson Talent Center. And those are the kind of, like, one at a time things, those, so you have a visiting session like this, is to bring those kind of ideas to the forefront, and see if they, you know, see if they're around. So, but that's work capacity, that's our, we, we talk, that's job one, because the staff that we have now are, are good, and, you know, they, they know their jobs, but it's, it's, we're, it's not a crisis mode. Um, and we have, you know, there's some other ways we can go with the department, with, you know, when we need to backfilling with part-timers, we're kinda doing that now. That was the model that we had in the community I used to work in. Um, it's not ideal, but it's a way to, to, to you get to a full staffing model. I would anticipate our staffing being above six or seven officers, and as our community grows, significant heads, I anticipate that. So, because I know that's the question, it's like, wow, you know, opportunities for advancement. I will say, I think it's critical for, for the police department. I mean, we have, we have interim chief who's great, and we'll have a full-time chief who will be equally great, but we do need to have some level of supervision. What, call it a sergeant, call it a shift leader, call it whatever. And that's just a good staffing model. Um, so you have somebody on at all times that is above a junior level, or above an entry level. And again, we're not talking about, you know, someone's a sergeant, and, you know, they're making, you know, eighty thousand dollars more than everybody else. We're talking, you know, the, the typical range is, you know, a couple percentage points more than, than, than everyone else. But you also don't get it, you don't have, not everybody will be a sergeant. You know, but some public service agencies have a staffing model at some point where everybody's a captain, but it's not what we're gonna do, so, anyway.
I have one last question for you, Chief.
Yeah.
Do we have the ability to contact other agencies surrounding us to see if they have part-time staff that are looking for additional hours?
We do have that mechanism. I'm talking to my partner officers constantly. The problem is, they're all in the exact same boat I am. And, and so, but, oh, absolutely. And, and I do still get around with my FBI agents, make these connections. I get out further than that, and so, oh, I'm, I'm not above seeing somebody else's officer.
Okay. All right. I mean, I know that there's been historically some officers that have worked part-time in Williamson, and also served in other communities part-time, so.
Right. It's just a way different police environment than it was even two years ago to now. It's, it's different. But, no, you're here.
Thank you.
Okay. So moving on, so, of the three, this is, this is probably, again, this, housing is, is viewed right now as an international issue. And, um, it was late yesterday, got another email from Dr. Spina about, you know, the good news is the school bond rating has been enhanced, but, you know, kind of one of the limiting factors is the concern over the number of students of school choice, and that, you know, housing in the region is continues to be a concern for Williamson schools. And, and, and that's, that's a fair assessment. The email came to myself, and also to, uh, to Wanda at Williamston Township. So, but the, the, the bad news in this scenario is that, that the city of Williamson, you know, the city of Williamson, Michigan, the city of Williamson, North Carolina, and the city of Williamson, England, is never gonna solve this. It's not an issue to be solved. It's not. It's, it's a question of the priorities, and it's a question that, and those, you're the elected officials of this community, and we have a representative government here, you know, what's important to your constituents, and how we view housing. Um, there's a tendency, when there's, you know, the town, and then it's surrounded by township, vacant land, that the city, it should be the driver of solving all issues related to housing. And that's, that's not the way it works. Because I, I don't think any of you feel that way. Um, you know, we have some regional obligations to folks, and we wanna be good neighbors and good partners, but there's real limits on what we can do. And as an objective assessment of the, the housing types, we have virtually every housing type in town right now at the size that we're at. We do. We have a whole gamut. Um, there's a number of apartments, there's manufactured housing, there's senior housing, there's brand-new, um, you know, sort of empty nester-type condos that are being built. Um, there's the neighborhood just across this winding trail, just out that doorway. There's, there's the, the older traditional neighborhoods, we have historic homes. I mean, short of ten-acre horse farms in town, which we're never gonna have, we have virtually every housing type. So, in my opinion, we, we're doing a, a, as good a job as any community of any size can do, at, at, adding housing, you know, a diverse level of housing. Um, we added, and I know not, not everybody feels great about the, the apartment complex that was added, I mean, I remember the taller apartment complex, but that's looked at, that's looked at missing, that's typical, that's missing middle housing. And that's for the young professionals and the up-and-comers, and, and we have, we have that too. Um, doesn't mean that we can't look at, um, you know, available land and, and figure out what we do from his own perspective, but, um, but one I think, I think is critical, and I, I kind of put some rudimentary, rudimentary maps together, is just create existing and potential development map. So, so we're all on the same page. And so when we have, you know, regional discussions, or discussions in the schools, like, this is what we have. And along with that is that housing inventory, to say, look, you'll be surprised to know that, I'm just picking a, you know, another fake statistic, that, you know, forty percent of our housing is, is rental housing. What? It is? So, we need a housing inventory report. We, we did that in my last community, and it's not, it's not exhaustive, and it's actually, it just takes somebody a couple hours to put that together. And then, from that, is to talk with council, and if, if we wanna move forward, we think there's a, a portion of housing, or the type of housing that we wanna see, we reserve, we search that, and then present incentive options, within our limited scope. I mean, as a, as a, as a city, we're very limited on what we can do. I mean, really, our incentive is, you know, how we, um, our zoning ordinance, like, what we allow. I mean, we, we can't, for us to, like, become a housing corporation, we'd have to do, do just that. We'd have to create another entity, and there's rules and regulations of that, and we have to fund it, and, um, I, I'm not recommending that at all. So, um, as I said, it's an issue that will always be of interest to folks, because it's, you know, hey, it's what, you live in town, you live in town. But these three sort of data-driven steps, I think are, are critical first, and then we can, you know, continue the discussion from there. So. Any, any, before I dive into a couple more slides, any, any thoughts on that?
No, I mean, I know that you and I have sat down with, with Adam, and we, we've heard, you know, um, his plea, that, you know, we need, the school district needs more housing opportunities here in Williamson, because, you know, he's fearful that he's gonna lose, um, school of choice students. And, you know, there's a majority of school of choice families that would like to live here. But short of us creating our own development company, and starting construction and building housing, I mean, it's, 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 it's tough to solicit out to development companies that would want to build here. And I mean, we definitely have the parcels available for it, and I know that we've talked about what our capacity for growth is, and we have capacity for growth. But, you know, you can't strong-arm somebody and say, come, come put a, a, you know, a fifty, uh, single home unit out by ninety-six. You just, you can't. I mean.
Well, I think.
Yeah.
It'll drive itself.
It will. You're absolutely right.
I mean, as these demands increase, the developers will see that.
Well, and as more land becomes unavailable, with our land being available, it will kind of force them in this direction.
Yeah, I feel like it'll happen more handily, whether we force our hand or not.
Yeah, yeah.
Was Adam saying things that he thinks we should do?
He'd like us to build houses. Short of, short of us, like, putting on tool belts, you know, I mean.
He's not saying what specific actions he should take, he just wants.
He would just really like to see more housing availability here locally. And that's tough. I mean, when you look at our city map, you know, I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty full, with the exception of what John has put here in, in these maps that would be available for development, but again.
Well, some of this is how motivate, uh, I'm the, how motivated are you to live in Williamson?
Right.
There's been, there's been two empty lots sitting across the street from my house for two years ago, that anybody can buy and build a home.
Yep.
How, how much do you wanna live here? Uh, it's not that there's not, it, you know, that there's nothing available. We, we also have, it, it costs.
Yeah.
It's not, um, you know, some of, some of these people that are school of choice, I think they have cheaper taxes where they live now.
Sure.
Um, and I, I don't know how much, I don't know how much we can do to, to change a lot of that.
Well, and you're right. And, and we all know that houses do not stay on the market longer in Williamson, because it is a desirable community. Houses go in twenty-four to forty-eight hours, they're off the market. So, you know, but you also, again, you have to have the, the, the wallet to be able to afford to live here too.
And this might even be an unpopular opinion, but realistically, we are what we are. Roots is a small farm agricultural community.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, do I wanna see us blow up into Okamis? No, personally, I don't. I don't wanna see that. I like our roots. I don't like the fact that there's this desire from some that, you know, we got the best schools in the entire state, but our teachers can't afford to live here.
Right.
You know, that part of it bothers me. So, um, I'm not one that's against change, but I do appreciate our roots of our community as well.
I do too. And, and I think that it, it will end up being the, the perfect scenario when it happens. And I hope that if we do have a developer that comes out, that they will truly build affordable housing for that middle-income family that more than likely wants to live here. I mean, I, I was talking with somebody that is one of my coworkers at MSU. She's like, I, because they're moving from Mount Pleasant down to East Lansing, and she's like, I didn't wanna have to spend over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a house, but I'm going to. And I mean, that's, I think that's a big problem for a lot of people, is, you know, everybody has their own definition of what affordable housing is. And so I would hope that if somebody were to come out, that we would be able to work very, um, in concert to, you know, if, if we are gonna have a development come out here, you can't put it at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars or higher, because we're not gonna, that's just not gonna attract, you know.
Ten acre parcels would have.
Right.
Definitely.
Yeah, yeah. Ten acre parcels, a hundred and twenty-five acre parcel out there by the, you're gonna put ten houses. That does nothing. Um, but, you know, you also don't wanna wedge them in and have it, you know, for lack of a better, better word, all of a sudden create the Williamson projects. You know, because that's, you know, it's gotta be a perfect blend.
We're not currently standing in the way of housing, I mean.
We're not.
Jerry, Jerry Tyce has a condo development, a plot condo development, which sounds very nice, that made its way through planning commission and ZBA last year.
Yeah, it did.
I'm not sure when he's planning on breaking ground, but that's to be, he's starting out with the first phase, but there's room for two or three phases over there.
Sure.
Um, but it, it's not, you know.
What level of income is, are those gonna be?
I mean, I, I don't know what level of income, I.
He didn't really say what level, I mean, they're gonna be like, what, two-bedroom condos, very similar to kind of like what the Red Cedar Run looks like, very complimentary out there.
But they're not, they're not, uh, the, the Cedar Run, that's more, um, older folks, retired, retired, retired folks. This is more, I think, from when, when Mr. Tyce was at ZBA, this was trying to get, you know, thirty-year-old professionals that weren't interested in, in having an acre property that they had to.
Low maintenance, but yeah, but yeah, living in Williamson.
But they, he didn't, I don't, I don't remember his exact price point. But again, it's like, that's a development that's gone through the whole process. We, you know.
Well, and Dan.
Help as much as we can.
You can agree, because you've been at, you've been here long enough, and you've been with ZBA and, and everything. We have literally rewritten some of our zoning to make it more attractive for people to come out here for business and for, for residential. So I mean, we are really doing everything that we can, um, to promote and be attractive, but, you know.
And I think trying to tell some of these, I, and I don't know how we would even go about it, you know, we, we can encourage it in conversation, but trying to tell them, hey, this is the price point we wanna be at, and they come back and say, it's not, uh, it's not feasible for me to, to build a development there. Why, I'm not gonna make any money, why would I do that?
Right. Right.
So, as I said, it's a, go ahead, go ahead.
Back one slide, the middle thing, housing inventory report. I'm, I'm a numbers guy, so.
Yeah.
I'm kind of curious, when might that be ready?
Um, we're starting our budget season, but we'll definitely have something prior to the start of the new fiscal year. And really, where I see that, I guess, the most valuable is, is we, comes time to update our maps or plan our zoning ordinance. Because really, that's, that's the, local governments are bad when they're trying into the market for determining housing. We're, we're not good at it. And frankly, there's not a need for that, as, as the mayor pointed out, somebody else too, that houses don't stay on the market for very long. And it's, it's, I know, it's a tough challenge, but, and I'm a data-driven person too, and I asked Dr. Spina, because he made the comment that the teachers can't afford to live here, and I said, can you send me, like, where the teachers are commuting from, like, you know, I, I don't need their names, just to get a general idea where they're coming from, and, you know, there's, most of them are from the region, but frankly, they're, they're choosing those reasons because, and, and then it gets into, and I don't want to go down the whole rabbit hole, what's affordable, but I'll, I'll share my own story, my own personal story. So, I used to live in Traverse City when I was a young person, and I paid three hundred bucks a month in rent for the end of the place. It was a dump, it was terrible, and I always wanted to live on the peninsula, right? Always wanted to live up there. The Peninsula Township has done nothing to make it affordable for me, even as a, you know, fifty-three-year-old dual-income person, I can't afford to live there, but I really want to live there, I do, someday. It's not gonna happen, right, unless, you know, work on a tennis court or something like that. Right, exactly, but it's, it's not gonna happen, but, and, and so, we're nowhere near that extreme, and even now, we're here, so I'll say it. Mount Pleasant, their challenge is, they had a university town that has lost ten thousand students. So you have ten thousand rental units available, ten thousand apartments, you know, all these dorms. So, housing in Mount Pleasant is, is very, very inexpensive. It's a very inexpensive place to live. But it's not as a desirable place to live anymore as, you know, East Lansing, or Oakhamis, or Williamson, and that's, we, we can't get, we're, we're, those are national-level challenges. And to build a house, a, a two-bedroom, one-bathroom house from scratch, any developer would tell you with the lot and all the building requirements and codes you gotta meet, it's about a quarter of a million dollars. A stick-built house, for, for a two-bedroom house. So, that's already beyond, there, there are houses in town in Williamson that are less than that. You may have to do some fixing, fixer parts of that, so. One of the things I wanted to, to bring to this discussion is, when we talk about available land, so, this is currently zoned, this is out by the highway, this is zoned residential. And then, you know, real, real close to it, this little parcel, this is just south of Nottingham Forest, this is also zoned residential. The rest of this has a mixture of zoning uses. So, there are developers, and I'll show you on the next slide, that will do developments like that. This is actual real development proposed somewhere, Syo Township, I think. And if you look at it, like, as a, from a, it's, it's very similar, there's like a road to the north, that's I-94 to the south, this, I think that's Baker Road, that's a pretty major road. But you can see the kind of density that's in here, and so things like that are available. But again, the market forces dictate whether somebody is that interested in that property or not.
Right.
And our question is, is that appropriately zoned? Do we want to see something like this someday? And, and that's how we, you know, we use the, the tools that we have, which is the master plan and the zoning ordinance, to make sure we're getting what we want. I think the majority of this is senior housing, by the way, because that is, that is the hot market in real estate, is senior housing. So, this is just an example of what, what could go there, but I, I, you know, I would have to dive way into the details of this. I didn't even like, I purposely blurt this out because I don't want to know. But things like this are available, but is that, that's what, as a group moving forward, is if you want to see something like that there, you don't have to answer that tonight, but those are the questions to be mindful when we're looking at our zoning, zoning ordinance moving forward. I call this Churchill Downs West, this is actually just to the west of where we're at here. This also is zoned residential, some of this is in the township, kind of got a little crazy with the highlighter. But this is another available, and this is not a huge area, you know, it's probably, you can probably put another fifty to a hundred houses, but if there's, if something like that was to be developed there, they're gonna be very similar to like what's, what's on Winding, Winding River Trail.
Mm-hmm.
This is Churchill.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is Churchill right here, right here.
Yeah, Winding River is the other one over.
Yeah, so, and those homes right now, I mean, you probably can't get into that neighborhood for under three hundred thousand. There may be one or two, if somebody has to beat up from under a brick, you maybe get a little bit less than that, so. And the other one, this is the Tice development, that was, yeah, went all the way through the zoning, and frankly, the city made accommodations for that, and looked at our ordinance, said, okay, we need to make these changes because we, we think this development makes sense there, and, you know, the market, Mr. Tice has decided, I think partly he's holding out a little bit, hoping that someone will help him pay the utility connection fee, I think that's a big part of that.
Keep up in ZBA.
Yeah, but we have a lot of this, this, this is in the township, this is available. I mean, we provide sewer to some of these properties, but, so there are available, not a lot, there are available things within the, the city limit, but vast majority of developable land is in the township, but all this is not that. Any more questions on, on housing before we move on? Okay. So, economic development, and again, it's, there, there's a lot of different ways that communities choose to do economic development. Some of it's getting into, you know, the direct buying and redeveloping land, and I would never, never, ever recommend us do that unless there was some piece of property that was gifted to us or something like that. But, really, the, sort of the modern tools for economic development are marketing and community branding. And we had a joint work session with DDA and the Chamber about that. And, one of the forces we're gonna be moving forward is, is working on a, it's the I Am Williamson campaign. See that, I am, it's tucked right in there, it's not the Will I Am, it's on the, it's hard. Barb's the brains behind Kayak and Quack too, full disclosure.
Oh, okay.
But, but the idea is to have this message, and it, it may not be I Am Williamson, but something like, similar to that. And some of the campaigns across the state, Field of Zeal, which is Zealand, in Chelsea, we had, you know, We're Something Else, and Else is the middle word in Chelsea, so, somewhat of a plan that. To have a, a, a consistent message across all of our, our Chamber and DDA efforts, and, and really promote Williamson in its entirety. So, that's, that's gonna be a fun project to work on, I mean, that's just on the ground stages. We're gonna have some, you know, sort of, planning charrettes with that, and you'll, you'll all be invited to that, there'll be, the public will be too, so I think that'll be a fun process. Placemaking, I think we do a good job with that, and that, that's the, you know, the built environment, like the parks that we have, and also the trails, and, you know, the emerging River Trail, I think is a big part of placemaking. But it's also the events we have, whether it's Jubilee or the Light Parade, those are huge things for placemaking and, and giving people a sense that, hey, this is, I had a lot of fun there, let's go back there and have dinner, and, you know, hey, I really like that place, let's, you know, maybe move there, or get our kids in school there. So, we do a really good job of placemaking, I think. We can always do better, but I think we do it, oh, you know, that. Farmer's Market is another example of placemaking as well. And then, then we have sort of the, you know, the kind of the nuts and bolts tools that, what we're due, the master plan and the zoning ordinance, we're due to update those documents. You know, we want to make sure that our ordinance is saying what it is we want it to say, that we want it to kind of, businesses that. I'll, I'll tell you, this is, so, the twenty-four hundred East Grand River, what was the name of the business that was there before?
Reliable.
Reliable Auto Parts. That's, that's somewhat of an anomaly from a zoning perspective, it's really, because it's zoned I-1, which is like industrial, and that's, that's probably appropriate because the wages and lakes is right historically. But that's a real challenge, and I, I took a call today, and it sounds like there's a, a buyer that can make the zoning work, and that, that's great. But that's an example of, our zoning ordinance has been somewhat of a barrier for, for having that property be, be sold.
Yeah.
Is that city?
It's at the very edge of the city, yeah.
Yeah, because last fall, John and I both had calls from a realtor, and it was a company that wanted to create a secondary warehousing location out of Mason, and it just, it would not have worked. It just wouldn't have, it would have been noise, loud, for, for those residents in Williamson, like.
Yeah, so, just an example, we want to make sure our plan ordinance is saying what we want it to say. And then for future development and redevelopment, a lot of those things, like, somebody used the term earlier, organically, like with housing, the same thing, I mean, we have people that are interested, we don't have a lot of available properties in, in town or downtown, but we do have some up here the highway, we talked about that in the second, that fits in with commercial industrial land. You know, we continue to have a, a strong downtown. We, we have a couple of things going to planning commission next Tuesday. There's a tax amendment for the, the 114 North Putnam, which is a small little two-story building right on the corner of Putnam and High. So there's potential for that, to have some, some people living there, that'd be residents, if that's approved. And then the Ice House redevelopment is going to be planning, so, people are interested. And again, those are, that's market forces. I don't know if you've driven by Nikki's, the, where, where, that, they have their signs out now, and each should be open. There was a sneak preview last night, but I couldn't go, I had something on my schedule already, but, so, again, that's a, that's a, gonna be a nice addition to, to town, and I, did you get a chance to go?
I did not.
Did anybody else get a chance to be there? So, that should be opening really soon, and again, market dictates that, you know, this is, and that's a good operator, that the owner, you know, runs a soup spoon downtown, anything, you know, that, but.
Well, and I think the one thing that we, that we know that we do very well is we have a very unique, diverse downtown area. We have independently-owned restaurants. The Chamber is starting to rebuild itself, which is a good thing. And that was one thing that, that John and I were, you know, we really wanted to kind of bring the Chamber together the beginning of this year, and, because John is on the Chamber board, which is fantastic, and he brings expertise in, 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 how can we rebrand Williamson to help bring people into the community? Whether it's to come to the Farmer's Market, to come to the theater, go to the restaurants, visit our service, you know, and our retail that is, that are downtown. We've had a lot of different downtown buildings go through facade improvements, whether they've done it out of their pockets strictly, or whether they have applied for the facade grant that DDA allows and contributes to. So, you know, I think that's a very big thing that, you know, we can all be a part of and help the Chamber, the service organizations, you know, instead of service organizations doing something on their own, you know, come together and, and share resources and, and roll up sleeves because it helps improve our community, it's, it's good for the residents, it's good for the businesses, it's good for attracting and, and bringing you in. So, you know, definitely having that joint effort between DDA and Chamber is, is really, I think, the right move and, and the way to move forward.
So, I really noticed that there used to be, there was a theme of antiques here, and people in the past were busting and so forth. So this antique thing was going.
Yep.
Does the concept of a theme like that come about because of what city government does? Or because it just sort of happens because it's?
I think it's very organic, because I think we've seen the rise and fall of the antiques. We're kind of known as a foodie destination right now, and I don't think that there's anything wrong with that at all.
No, no, no.
And I think we saw during COVID that all of those restaurants and service workers supported each other tremendously. If restaurants weren't open, or, you know, hey, we're not open, but order here, and, and really supported each other. And, you know, the theater works hand-in-hand with the restaurants, I mean, when the theater is open, those restaurants are packed. When we have activities in town, I think we need to do a better job of encouraging businesses to stay open longer, especially like Light Parade, you know, when parade's done, everybody who's had a leave. So, you know, if we can encourage that, you know, we also have talked, John and I have met with John Bullman regarding our walkable community, and we are a river community, let's use that to our benefit. We have the kayak landing, we actually have two. There's a lot of potential for events to take place around the river now because of that. John Bullman's got some great ideas that he shared with DDA, and that joint workshop with, with Chamber, and, you know, let's use these things for our benefit, and, and really, you know, promote Williamson. So I do, I do think you see the rise and fall of different trends within the city, but it seems like we're at a, you know, we're at a, in a good place where we have a good diversity downtown, with service, with retail. I'd love to see more retail, but, you know, you, you gotta find people that want to fill those blanks. I mean, Will Long does a fantastic job, he's kind of taken over for, you know, the number of businesses he has downtown, like Dawn, Marie, and Paul Joseph had. But, you know, I think, you know, whatever we can do in that economic development side to help support and encourage businesses to come in, it, we don't have very many vacant storefronts. And I know that that was a question on social media, somebody's interested in bringing a business to town. And, I mean, our occupancy level is, is, is good downtown, which is nice. I know Keller's probably has some open space, but I think this person was looking for actual, you know, storefrontage on Grand River, so.
So let's take the theme of the restaurants like you brought up. That's clearly, you know, an outstanding aspect of our city. So, if we wanted to say that's gonna be a thing of ours, do we, as a council, have anything to do to promote that continuing? Or, or do we just let the environment be healthy and let, hope things happen, or, you know?
It's a combination of, it's all of those good things add up to a great community, right? Oakhamis is, you know, fine school district, I don't, I don't, there's a, there's a mall there, but people don't go to the mall anymore. I mean, that's, that's reality, right? So, but we have all these other things that, that, you know, you kind of like stack all these good things. And some of them are big, and some of them are, you know, not so big. But, as far as like a council, and DDA, and Chamber, it's, it's being supportive of the concept, and, and, you know, what appropriate, it gets to be budgeted, obviously, but the, the DDA has had, has community promotional marketing in its budget forever. So, so is the city council, so it's, it's using those dollars in a way, not just for like a one-off event, although those were important too, but developing on the initial phase more of a comprehensive campaign that Williamson has all of these great things. And that's what every, every community, large or small, does. It's, all of their amenities are put together. You know, we all know French moves and chicken, right? That's chicken and Christmas ornaments.
Right.
That's their thing. They have a lot of other good things in their town too, but that's their thing. So, for us, we, we want to almost stay away from any one particular trend, just like, hey, you know, we have all of these great things year, year after year.
So for, for years, and I know it's still out there, but we don't see it as much, but we always had the, you know, Williamson, discover the charm sort of thing, and that kind of encompassed any trend, or, you know, would that include antiques, or restaurants, or some theater, or whatever, kind of. So, I mean, if we're gonna really visit that, and we could wrap all that into some sort of.
Right, right.
Kind of like you were saying.
Yeah. And.
One size fits all.
Exactly, and when we were sitting there talking about DDA, I mean, I, I immediately had in my, you know, head that I Am Williamson, and having different businesses, you know, if we do a commercial series or something like that, you know, having that business owner, and, and tying it in with the Williamson charm, you know, I Am Williamson, and this is my business. I Am Williamson, and this is our theater, you know, I mean, kind of that whole concept. Brooke, that is the Batney Boutique, she immediately caught on to it too, she's like, I Am Williamson, you know. So, I mean, it's, it's a really neat idea, and I'd like to see it develop more because I think there's so much potential with, you know, featuring different aspects of town with that I Am Williamson, and discover the charm, and, and the river community, Chamber has changed their logo, and they've got kind of that Winding River on the W. We have the River in our, our logo. So, I think, you know, as we progress through this year and, and try to develop this, we're gonna end up with something very neat, and, and, and we're gonna be able, you know, it's, it will hopefully draw people in.
Are there any plans for development in the industrial part?
So, team segue is Adam again, so here we go.
Thank you, Terry.
I will say this, our challenge. I will say this, our challenge with the industrial park is a couple fold. One of the biggest is that, you know, we have the road running through it, which sort of limits the parcel size. So there's that. It is all these parcels, for the most part, are owned by one entity. And, you know, and they're, they're, they're good folks and, you know, they, for them, they made a good deal, you know, before. But that's, that's a, that's a challenge. And, you know, I've only really been interested in these type of, you know, detail things in Williamson for about fourteen months. And there's folks around the table who've been involved with it for a lot longer. But it gets back to with our zoning ordinance and master plan, what do we want to do? What do we want to see? I had somebody, this isn't the best slide to see it, but here's Nottingham, which is the residential community here. And this is, they're bringing in about a permit a week. I mean, these things are flying off the shelves. And they did all last, you know, spring and something. That was one of the first things I did was do a zoning permit last year about this time for them. I had somebody else come and say, hey, I know that's industrial, but how about we change that to residential? I mean, there's a lot of issues why you wouldn't want to do that, but those are the type of things we need to think about when we do our master plan. But we we do have some industrial land available, you know, but maybe there's some of these parcels we have to rethink. You, we look at these, these are not industrial, they're zone commercial, but this is one of the landing. You know, they're right across the street from the industrial park and they've been available, I mean.
Years.
For years, so. So the question is, you know, we have Tractor Supply. Tractor Supply is investing money in this store and they're they're doing, you know, some outdoor improvements there, which means that's a successful store. I mean, it's a corporate store. They don't, they're not gonna invest in it if it's not successful, right? I'm not saying we want another or I'm not saying yes or no to another chain store, but is it zoned properly and maybe we rethink the zoning of it long term when we get into our master plan?
So one of the first things that came up when I got on council a few years back now was a meeting with the director of LEAP. And he was, you know, they were actually taking over economic development or as part of the county at the time. He was explaining that and then also making a pitch for us to become members. So we've done that.
Almost five years.
Five, five years or so. And I know you've only been here for about fourteen months of that, but do we know, have we gotten any real, any real traction? Do we think out of that membership in that five years or?
So I had a similar conversation in the, when I was in Washtenaw County, interregional agency, it's called Spark. And it's the same type of deal, right? And I told him, we're not getting anything, like we, no new business has been here. We haven't gotten any, we haven't even gotten any leads. And most of the development was geared towards Celine or Yarber or Pittsfield Township. And so with that conversation, we ended up, the staff was a facility mason, they ended up taking over a facility in Chelsea in town. And it was in the in the industrial park area, so that was good. So I've had those conversations with LEAP that, you know, one is our time. But I know, but apart from LEAP, these are, these are a challenge. I mean, they're, they're.
They're a big challenge and, you know.
Part of the barrier is, is, you know, the.
It's to own.
The expectation of that that owner would develop it for the, and not be contingent by the sale. But I will say, for these areas, and this gets back to like rethinking, this is zone industrial. This little, this piece right here, and this is I2, which is by the highway, it's probably good zoning. This is mixed use along here, and then this is the vast majority of this, we saw that on the residential slide, is is residential and so is this. LEAP, you know, recently, like within the last month or so, has talked about, hey, you know, you have this big parcel. What what does the county or what does the community want to see there? And folks talk about, well, that, you know, all the could've, should've, would've, and, you know, we've all heard that story before. But for, and I'm not defending LEAP at all, but I'm saying that, you know, they're, they want to know what our interest is in this parcel and what we would like to see there. I mean, would be, and knowing what the zoning is, it's mixed use, which is, you know, kind of like across the street, which is.
Mayor darts.
Gas station. Mayor darts, the gas station.
And everything.
Jersey Giant, I believe I forgot that because I'm a little off, ashamed of that. I eat there way too often. That goes back to, I'm a shooter, but, but so that's the front part of it. And then this is all residential. I mean, can can we, and no one has to answer this tonight, but can we look at this differently? Do we, would we, would we change the ordinance so some of it or a portion of it could be for a more industrial type use?
Sure. So I guess, you know, and John, you and I have talked about it and and it's been an ongoing thing. But, you know, can we, can we bring, is there any way to get Granger to the table to talk to them about? Because I mean, they're in development, they've got to have, you know, some people that have approached them with, you know, what parcels do you have available or a conversation with Granger, LEAP and Williamson for that industrial park area, you know, to to help make it more attractive. Because I know we had lawn stars that wanted to take over or wanted several parcels in the industrial, but we just, we couldn't make it work. And so I'm sure there's opportunities there, but we have to figure out, you know, and it and it is unfortunate that they kind of are, you know, our hands are tied when it comes to those industrial parcels. However, what can we do to help Granger? Find people that want to build on that, you know, who do we, what people do we get at the table to make that happen?
Do they own the residential thing over there too?
No, not not that back corner behind Nottingham. They don't.
Well, I want to point out, this is still, this is zone industrial.
Yeah.
I don't want, I, sorry, I should, but I had somebody ask, hey, can we rezone that to residential? And I said, you know, probably not.
I mean, you know.
Because of the uses that are already.
And and do we have the ability, if we were to work with Granger in changing some of those industrial parcel sizes to make it more attractive for them, for us?
You mentioned that there are challenges associated with that. There's a newer guy here. What are the challenges? Can we get a quick history on it? It's all owned by Granger, I understand that. The parcels are small. What else?
The, what's, it's been explained to me by folks who were interested in developing there is that that they weren't able to buy a lot. They wanted to build it on their own or have their own contractor and Granger would only sell it to them.
If they could.
Use Granger Development to build the building.
So that's the main issue there?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, and I know we're, we don't have to yes, no, any of that type. But we talked about possibly across the road there, looking at some of the different zoning there. If you rezone some of that possibly industrial, then that pulls a little bit. It opens that up for people maybe to look at it in the past.
Right.
That's what I was.
Right. Well.
But that's what we can think about.
Yeah.
So when potential people might want to use a land and they find out that it's not what they want to do there, is that typically their response is not pursue it? Or or is it possible that'll come and say, I have this idea I want to do there, but we're gonna have to change it down?
So for anything of size, like like manufacturing of any kind, they want as few barriers as possible? And if they perceive that a zoning, rezoning is going to be along protracted, they have no interest in that? Because there's just so much land available. Now, what the force is working in our favor with all of the things happening in Lansing region, with with the the new EV plants being built and all of that business, the the primary and secondary and tertiary suppliers for that. I know I shared this at some point last year, this is, and this was truly, it was good information that Ingham County is like, was like ninety-nine point eight percent full as far as or as far as occupancy for industrial properties. Because nothing was built during COVID and then there's this newer, there was a little bit of pent up demand. So folks are getting to the point now of looking at possibly building buildings out of spec for industrial and that hasn't happened since like the sixties. So there are those things afoot in the region where, and again, what, 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 and again, the city doesn't own it, but this is in our town, in our city limit. And I, I think I told you this when I interviewed, I was shocked that this was in the city limit. I thought there's no possible way, like it's got to be the township, right? Because it's pretty vacant on either side, so. But it's a nice asset to have and we can, we, there's been probably two or three, you know, site prospectors that cold called me and said, hey, what do you think about that and that property? I'm like, well, you know, our community has to go through that 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 priority selection and someone in this currently. But if you have a great idea, we need to know what the great idea is. Someone has chicken and the egg, but there was someone who was interested in putting like a thousand unit senior housing with marijuana manufacturing. And so, well, that's easy. We don't, we don't allow that. Not the seniors, we love the seniors, right? Okay, it'd be old Williamson.
Only on, on Green. Only on I Street.
Yeah, so. So I guess, I guess what I would say, just kind of like recap to economic development, for a town of like, you know, our size, our amenities, we're we're doing most of the things that we should be doing. And the things that we aren't doing, like a more comprehensive branding message, we're gonna do that. And with community events, you know, I like to think one of the positive influences of me being on the Chamber board is that we need to do fewer, better events. And when we get good at the events that we do, then we can think about doing other events. Because events for the Chamber, they have to bring people into town or they have to raise funds to do more events to bring people into town. I mean, that's why you do events in the Chamber, that's it. So we're focused on those things and I think that will, we had, we had a great dinner last week. There was like a thousand, or there was a hundred people there and that was like the most of fun in a long time.
Well, the events are something I'm curious about because we, we used to do, the, Holly knows, we used to do the Art on the River as part of the city. And then we stopped doing it as part of the city and now for a while it was being done in other ways. Does this council, I know if you're doing events, whether you're choosing tax dollars to, for your events, if there's some people that don't like doing it. I'm not familiar with how this council feels about running an event.
John, John and I talked about Art Fest and and I sang Holly's praises. I think that, and just like you said, fewer events but bigger impact, I, I don't know. I'm not gonna speak for everybody else, but I would like to look at city events again. I know we got away from it because we said, okay, out of, out of the nest, little bird, time to fly. On and on, we did that with farmer's market. They became very successful. But as Holly can speak from experience, it takes a lot of effort to to organize those events, volunteers, you know, the marketing of the event, the planning, it's, and everything, and she did it extremely well. But you've got to have that time and commitment and, you know, I'd love to see us be able to partner with Chamber on those events. I'm not opposed to bringing events under a city umbrella again, but I, but I know that it takes time, effort, resources and and.
What about partnering with current events? I guess what I get that without trying to be sneaky about it is why doesn't the city like combine with the Red Sea Jubilee?
Right.
Because we don't, there's not a whole lot of connection there.
Red Sea Jubilee, yeah, right here. Let's start right.
Return to the building idea.
I don't, I don't have, I know, I know for a long time, we would have to see a plan. That would be my thought.
What would our project look like?
Jubilee is constantly, we very much want to, want to grow, do new things. But within our existing structure, we are doing everything we can to put on what we are putting on. So to, and and I think, I think Art Fest was a, was an amazing standalone event on its own. And like, I, I know there are people within Jubilee and I'm one that are kind of like, I, I gotta see it. Because, but that have talked about, hey, we could do an Oktoberfest, you know, and do it in McCormick Park instead and we would, you know. Now I look at them and go, we barely have no volunteers to put on Jubilee for a week. How are we gonna do it again in October? And I'm barely alive again by October weekend. But, you know, but but we've had those conversations. So if the city decided, hey, Art Fest is something we wanted to revive, I guarantee there are people that are on the Jubilee Committee now that if you wanted to do that, you know, end of summer and fall, that would come on board and want to, want to help out with that and partner with that. Now, how, my question is always, you know, how do we accomplish that? Do we've got the people? Where's the plan in place for all that? But I, I know there, there would be an interest there, like I, I know they would, there's, we're, Jubilee has had a two-year debate on how to change our infrastructure because we inherited, all of the, the Lions did the beer tent for over fifty years, right? And we got all their stuff when they very nicely gave it to us with very short notice and said, hey, you're taking this over. Well, we just actually, we were going back and forth about the refrigerator trailer. It was dying. It was, you know, a semi-trailer that had been taken off the road in like nineteen sixty-five. It was like a nineteen forty's semi-trailer and then turned into a refrigerator trailer. Well, now it's twenty twenty-three, right? So the big debate was because of the, do we want to do other, other events? If we want to do other events, do we want a giant semi-trailer? When we could try and do a smaller trailer that's easier to move, but then you don't have, all of you have been in the beer tent, you have that semi-trailer that's the whole backstop of our entire food service area. And it's a great weather break and things like that. So we, we've been debating this for two years. We actually just bought a new full-size reefer trailer. But but those are conversations that.
But Jubilee could rent that refrigerator trailer out to other events in the city.
Yes.
And and make more use of it. So it's, it's about cooperation and partnership with all the service organizations. And I know that John had mentioned it during our DDA joint work session with Chamber. And it really is about pooling resources and working together and not so independently anymore. I mean, Rotary does a great job at doing what they do. Kiwanis does a great job doing what they do, Jubilee, you know, the Eagles. We have a lot of service organizations within this community that if we start linking arms and partnering, partnering together on a limited list of events and really promoting the heck out of those to bring people in and being successful at it and then saying, okay, we're really good at these, now we have capacity to add to that list of events. And I do think that Art Fest would be a fantastic one to bring back because the popularity was there. I mean, Holly even did a combined Art Fest with a wine, beer, you know, wine and beer tent and and everything. And I'd love to see that come back. You know, farmer's market had a very successful food truck throwdown showdown. And then everybody, you know, two thousand people left that and filled the restaurants within, you know, the town for that night. So there are things that I know we do well. We just have to focus on that and and add those extras. Instead of having, what was, Witches and Warlocks one weekend and then Downtown Trick or Treat the next weekend. Combine those efforts, do, pick, pick one weekend and do multiple events. Because then you're really gonna, you know, increase, you know, people coming into the community and it benefits everybody. So.
Oh, I'll put comments. So so stowing growth is, they run the farmer's market, but they also could do other things.
Yeah.
And so I'm gonna add to this comment the, the most, one of the more amazing things I've seen happen in town is when the chainsaw artists came here.
Yes, for the, for the trees.
I'm telling you, these, so if you talk about like arrogance of artists or, you know, that kind of thing, these chainsaw people, they don't have that at all. I don't know why, but they're just sort of like, they're amazing.
They may not have all their fingers.
I mean, it was an amazing group of people and a really, really positive experience just all across the board. The trees being, the trees were made, but also they each made an individual piece that was auctioned off. And so the whole thing was just, the whole wood idea is in my mind as a, like art. It's Art Fest, but it's wood.
Well, and think about it too, Scott, I mean, you remember back and and Holly probably remembers that too. We had an amazing winter fest with ice carving sound. Now I get it, winter doesn't necessarily cooperate most of the time. However, you plan ahead and and have those big box of ice brought in, no matter, you know, what the temperature is. But, you know, I think the one year there had to have been like fifteen to twenty different ice sculptures throughout town. You know, we do, we have an amazing park that, you know, we can hold events in, you know, and we, and we are very open to all of the organizations that want to host events. I mean, Old Nation did a beer, International Beer Fest down there and with music and in the band show. I mean, Old Nation did a beer, International Beer Fest down there and with music and, and the band show a weekend. So it's just, you know, so whoever wants to, you know, help organize events, see John.
Just to, I guess, kind of bring it to those, like, a lot of the things that you mentioned, Scott and I have talked about. We've been saving up.
I have a stockpile of trees.
Stockpile of trees.
You do, getting two or three more from the project.
And, and the, the sculptures now are getting past the age where they have to come out. And so now the question, and we're not answering that or asking that tonight, but it's, okay, when do we launch that event? Do we do it as part of the, the light parade? You know, give people other things? Do we have it on a separate day? So a lot of those conversations are happening. I, I think, you know, with the Chamber, with like recalibrating a lot of things that they do and, and also looking, you know, circumstances are what they are, but the group that they're, that is there now, other than Will, they've all been on the board less than, than I have. Which is crazy because I've been here for a year and a month. So I think everybody's open to the right partnerships. And I never thought about Jubilee running, I can't wait to see an Oktoberfest in twenty twenty-four.
Well, exactly.
But the only comment is like, events, events are, events are a critical piece of what we do, but there, there is a long lead time. And, and Holly will tell you the limiting factor for, you know, any event is the volunteer base. You have to have it, and you gotta be conscious of not burning out your volunteers because we all know it's kind of the same folks year after year. Event after event. So that's good. I'm glad that everybody's amenable to that, but we have a lot of those. But the ice sculptures, I sent Will along, a whole host of community visit, Dexter, Milford, a bunch of them. Hounds our size that just did ice sculptures and they bring in lots and lots of people. So. And, and those are, and maybe we do that in February when it's kind of the, you know, the dog days of winter. So anyway, we need to move on a little bit. I, I promise the rest of it'll go pretty quick. So transportation wise, Road Diet and Hotlem are checked because those are in, in progress. Scott reported on Road Diet the other night, but we did get the MDOT comments back and I looked at them. We looked at them collectively today and they're not like, they're, they're more like, hey, we don't like that kind of crosswalk. We like the other kind that we're used to. So that's good. So that's the majority of the comments. So should be moving forward with that pretty quickly. Local streets, and this was a couple of council members in coverage, operations meeting and expressed some concerns about the condition of our streets in general, but particularly the local streets. And one of the, the primary benefits of the water main, sewer main projects that we're doing is we're gonna be replacing the surface on all of those streets. So that's a huge shot in the arm for those projects moving forward. We'll talk about that again in the next slide. Sidewalks. So I'll just say this, we need to collectively do a better job of sidewalks. And frankly, what that means is putting more money towards it. I know we have the cost share. I don't know that that's working the best. And when I come up with an alternative plan, I'll present it to all of you and you'll vote on it. But you will see more of an allocation for sidewalks in the budget moving forward. We're planning a lot of catch-up in a lot of areas. And I'm talking about existing places where there are existing sidewalks. I'm not talking about adding sidewalks.
The other came up on the community page, the guy that Mason was talking about, like that, their sidewalk.
That's true, some of it, ours are pretty bad. Maybe instead of fifty-fifty, maybe eighty-twenty?
Well, yeah, I mean, and that's, that's a, that's a, I don't think that'll be a work session topic, but that'll be a council decision point with the way the ordinance is written. If you're, if you're happy with that, okay. But strategically, we have to figure out sidewalks and we have to do a better job with it in what we are. And it's not a knock on, you know, city engineers past, present or future. It's just, you know, when I drive through town and look at what we have, one, it's incumbent upon me to make the allocation or request the allocation of the budget so we can do more, but we really need to evolve with that. And I can tell you some horror stories offline individually about some of the issues we ran into in the last place. I were specific to sidewalks. So we need to at least start making a, making a better effort for that. And then the nominal rise pass, we talked about some of these things.
We didn't want too long better than.
Yeah.
All right.
Can go.
You're not so lucky.
Oh, no, I just saw it.
Why don't everybody stand up for a second? Oh, there we go.
Oh, oh, oh.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Well, I'm the guy who hits return nine times because it doesn't, you know. So we will be, I mean, the crack ceiling, crack fill, that's an important part of the annual maintenance. And you can see, we did a lot in twenty-two and twenty-three and that will continue in, in twenty-three, twenty-four and beyond. That's a very reasonably priced way to get some light, additional light out of your street. So that will happen. We did talk about, so all of these areas are gonna get new surfaces on, on their street, which is great. And new sidewalks for a lot of them, right? Are you confirming yes or no?
Yeah, I guess that would be my question.
That's, I think that's a big question, especially with like Williams where you have one side of the street that has sidewalk and the other side that doesn't. A lot of those houses were built before setback and all kind of stuff.
Well, and, and I spent, and I can speak to William Street too because, you know, I grew up there and stuff. But yeah, like that sidewalk's in really bad shape. And you can, and you can tell where the city went around trees to make the sidewalk and stuff. So it's, you know, it's, it's.
I kind of like that, but there's spots where it's like, you have the.
Oh, oh, yeah. Oh, I remember when my brother was younger and he bit, and this was down like by Jenners, tree roots and stuff. And, oh, he and his friends would bite the edge of the one sidewalk curb and go flying on their skateboards.
Well, I, I do have to tell you all that the HUD projects, we hadn't started that as sidewalk projects too. So if that's what you want, it's gonna eat into the budget of, of work. And we might need to push twenty twenty-three projects to twenty twenty-four.
No, 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 no.
I think, I think that, I think that the sidewalks that are there that.
We need to start making a plan.
We need to make a plan. We need to make some, not just make a plan, because we could all make plans. We just need to make some progress on it.
The sidewalks are.
We don't need that.
No.
No.
We can, we can defecate somebody on staff for that. The Red Cedar Trail, so here's the plan. And this is from, you know, Old Mill Park up here to the new kayak landing. And it's a good plan. I like it. I mean, it's really, it really kind of serves as a secondary, it's like a pedestrian main street on the backside of, of Grand River. Five, six and seven are, are not done yet. The other one, two, three, one of these, the water wheel project's not done. But the, the actual path is done. And then, you know, obviously eight, nine are done. So in the coming year, we're really looking to find some, there's still a lot of grant money available to, to complete the connector. There are some, some challenges with acquiring easements and we'll, we'll have to work through those. But this project will be presented to council at some time in the coming fiscal year. With the idea of being grant funded.
Yes. Again, this is a history kind of a thing. What I've heard is that there are issues with the people that own the property along there. Is that still the case or?
There's, there's three, there's three properties that we need to revisit. Enough time has passed. John and I have the paperwork that Earl Wolf gave us. So I kind of handed that off to John. But, you know, this spring, this summer, we'd like to revisit those property owners and see if they would join in. But there's ways to kind of work around it. But as you can see, there's the sidewalk access. So you would come off the boardwalk, out to the sidewalk, kind of bypass, reconnect to the boardwalk. It still will be walkable no matter what, but you know, this vision is great. We just, we need to do a little bit more work and, you know, talk to those.
How much? Cause there's a certain distance from the river that.
Right.
You can use without an easement, right?
Yeah, but it depends on the riverbank and all that type of stuff and, and.
It's all where the traditional bank of the river is. You can, wherever the traditional height of the river is, that's where you can be. Anything past that's private property. It's the same thing with like the Great Lakes, whatever, what's considered beach, what's considered private property.
But yeah, I mean, there are really, I think. So there's three, three more people we need to speak with.
Do you know if art is part of this at all?
Art?
Yes, actually, John Bowman kind of has an idea for art along the path. So, you know, it's, it's been discussed. It's not, there's nothing final, but yes, he has mentioned.
He likes the idea of art, but hasn't discussed specifically what that art would be.
No, but, but he has, you know, he'd like to have art along the path. So as you're walking, you know.
Does the water wheel thing include some sort of a bridge over to the island?
Well, I have an idea for that that I want to talk to John that I'm not willing to mention right now.
Okay, so it's not part of this right here, but it might be in the future. Okay.
Yep, have an idea.
So that's just to kind of back up. I mean, we have a lot of transportation things going on. We have a lot of projects, big projects that are, that are coming forward. I guess I feel I'd mention Memorial Park. We did get the, the planning grant for that. And in discussions with, with Bob Ford, who's doing the design, because again, it's always presented that that would be a grant funded project that, that in discussions with the county and their grant cycle, they're recommending that we apply for the twenty twenty-four trust fund grant. So that would be a year from now. So again, the idea is for that to be entirely grant funded. But that project's still in the, the design phase and no one's given out that already like that. So some of our regional opportunities, we, we've talked about, I put a lot of communications in the city manager memo about the Red Cedar Road or Trail Initiative. Again, John Bowman and the Rotary Clubs are really spearheading that. I think it's a great concept. There, there are, there's a meeting here in a couple of weeks that Commissioner Schaefer helped put together to talk about a joint application. And that's really the, to have ongoing maintenance to clear the river. Cause you know, all of our plans for launches and whatnot don't, don't launch very far if you're portaging every thirty seconds on, on the river. So our section from point to point is pretty clean, but I know that always hasn't been the case. And there'll be times when trees come down that we'll have to work through that. The other, the joint master plan, I talked about this a little bit. I did have a meeting with the township supervisors from Wheatfield and from Williamson Township. Wanda Bloomquist put together to gauge our interest. And certainly, you know, I think as a group, we're amenable to, to having that as a discussion. Joint master plans are really, really difficult. Everybody can agree a concept that they're a good idea, but it's the details always that seem to bog things down. I can say at this table, I do not recommend having a joint planning commission. That, that is a very, very almost impossible thing to bloat. But we could certainly, as I told Ms. Bloomquist, we'd certainly, you know, as a council, you know, entertain a discussion and, you know, if it comes up again at our joint meeting rates. She did go far is, is to get a, a proposal or a kind of an outline proposal submitted from McKenna. And I said that, you know, McKenna's done a solid job for us from time to time, but I'm not sure that, you know, we could just, decide as a group that that's the, the company that we want to use. We, we prefer to go through, if we're gonna do this, to go through more of an RFP, RFP process. So just know that that's something that, those discussions will continue. And as I, as I said, what's different is, you know, I'm not the chief elected official. It's a little different for those two supervisors to, you know, bring it to the board and, you know, I guess kind of push it through. And I said, Frank, we don't do things like that in, in town. And, you know, we, we work really, in really good harmony. And I, and I like our joint work session with, with Williamson. So just be mindful of that's, that's out there. We didn't really talk about, you know, what the counting points might be. It kind of goes back to the housing discussion is, if the school is concerned about having more housing developed, most of the developable land in this area is still in the town of this. So.
Well, and I think too, that if there's a project where mutual borders are affected, I think that's something we would want to be involved in, but that's gonna be so, such a limited basis, you know, and. But I, I do, I do appreciate the work that Wanda put in for the river cleanup because I know she was big spearhead on that. And I think those types of things are good, but I, I know probably, you know, a, a joint planning commission, I don't know.
I think, I think the last like kind of joint, and I could be wrong. I, I don't, I don't look at everything that comes through. I, I scan through the construction permits we get, but the, the last large project we had that joint border boundaries was when they had the, the, the river cleaned out, dredging.
Yeah.
And that was, you know, the residents nearby kind of got a notice.
Yeah. But that was a, that was a good partnership. I just don't know what else there would really be that, you know, and, and I like our joint work sessions too, you know, just so that we can update, you know, each municipality and what's going on.
There, there's only been a couple of successful models across the state. And Frankham is kind of the gold standard, but it's different because Frankham is surrounded by one township. And they haven't agreed upon a development line or annexation line and that's it. So, you know, when I look at what our, you know, interest in that would be is, yeah, you know, I always look at our city border and it looks like a little person, right? It's got like two arms and a leg and a head. There's some dip downs from the township into the, in, in a perfect world, a joint master plan would need that we would have a squared off border. Because the, the reality is, as much as we can, you know, say we want to cooperate and we want to have each other's best interest, you know, the interests of the city of Williamson when it comes to like large scale land development in the townships is dramatically different than what the townships and, and vice versa. I mean, the township, townships anywhere would love to tell cities everywhere how they should plan the community. I can tell you my experience, the converse is not true. They really like the city to, you know, kind of stay where they're at and not grow any farther. And that's okay. I do stay there. I live in a township. I guess I do that. Any, any other, anybody have any other thoughts?
Be pleased for them on Williamson Township?
Yeah, there's been discussions in fact, I won't see that going anywhere, but there has been.
So that's an idea you like or?
No, I don't, I don't think it's a successful, whatever. The city talking with this, we have not had discussions, but that's my, that's what happened. It's my first team here thirteen years ago. That was, that was right after the sheriff pulled back. They allocated the townships and, and people think it's a moneymaker. It's not. And then you got dual political things. You've just doubled your liability exposure. And I'm guessing this council would hang me if I was chief and all our resources were out there and something happened in here. It's kind of a brief, that's where I come from. But that's, that's just me one person talking. We haven't had this discussion.
So you say joint master plan. I was thinking planning mission, but then I heard annexation. Is that part of what happens when there's a master plan? That, like you said, the square borders as a person kind of the thing?
That's, that's what Frankham, their model is. They have a agreed upon line that the city won't grow any farther than that. That agreed upon annexation line. And then I guess it expands out through, as you roll through time, but.
I guess this is maybe a historical question. Again, has there been a historical thing between Williamson and Williamson Township of the city annexing things to make our borders more cohesive?
I would say it's, I'll still play the new person card. There are some four twenty-five agreements that were entered into in the sixties and seventies and the eighties that were not in our best interest. And I know some of them might have been born out of like consent judgments, like somebody got sued for this or that. But that's part of the reason I think our border is kind of skewed. And we also provide utility service to a lot of the surrounding areas and that's it. And that's not common without a four twenty-five agreement that says after twenty-five or fifty years, those territories then become part of the city.
I'm seeing the mayor.
In a perfect world, I'd love to square out our borders, but I don't, you know, in a perfect world, our borders would be Zimmer to Lynn to Sherwood to, you know, fifty-two, Deets or whatever. But in a, that just, it, it's not likely.
Okay, that was kind of the question. Okay, got it.
But what, what if you nice?
So moving forward, some of the new opportunities, we talked about the marketing campaign. City webpage upgrade. I know there was a committee established for that before and I know it, it, it went away because I think the thought was that it was too expensive, but. But we're really due for a webpage upgrade. So that's something that I'll bring forward to council. Canton Illinois has a really, they have a really cool page that I like and it becomes a lot of things. So, you know, when you get a time, just check out their page. I'm not sure how new it is and I don't know, I don't like to go there. Canton Illinois, it's in your packet. Yeah, you can look that up. Um, we do have the master plan and zoning ordinance updates coming. As I said, they should reflect our priorities. And then also our, our parks plan does expire in the, in the coming year. And so we'll be looking to, to upgrade that or update that. I don't think a full rewrite's necessary, but we need to update. And that's, um, you, you need to have an updated parks master plan in order to apply for trust fund grants. We could probably get by with a twenty twenty-three plan, but I think we're at a good point with a lot of the activities that have taken place in the last five years. And then with Old Mill and Volunteers Park and then looking at the, the River Trail as a, you know, potential, um, new amenity. I think it's time to, to update the plan. So we have a lot of stuff, you know, good solid government stuff like utilities and we have some other opportunities in front of us as well. Holly's waited patiently for a two hour or an hour and fifty-five minutes. So we're really, I've been doing all the talking, so we'll let Holly kind of lead off with the apartment update.
Okay, so I think the biggest thing in front of us right now is trying to implement election change. And I will tell you, twenty-three years ago as of yesterday, when I started here, that man in that picture Kurt Hunt was our precinct chairperson. And all of our precincts were at city hall and over behind the library in the annex, what it was called. His biggest technology was probably a Sharpie and some punch cars. And, um, his biggest requirement was having coffee like right when they started. So, um, obviously a lot of things have changed in twenty-three years and we are constantly hit with new laws every single election. And it can be two weeks before an election starts that we are having to scramble and change things at the last second. The latest proposal that was approved by the voters in November mandates in our constitution that we have to have nine straight days of early in-person voting. While that's exciting in concept, the actual implementation of it is very difficult, especially for people like our small communities like us. We don't have, you know, the resources, we don't have the, the spaces, the locations available. Some places don't have a location at all. They have no idea what they're going to do with this. And a school is not going to let you shut them down for, you know, twelve days really by the time you're done with everything. This mandate is largely unfunded at this point. We're talking about, you know, having to get another tabulator. A tabulator for us, I literally got the quote on Monday was over six thousand dollars just for the tabulator. That doesn't include.
On the backside.
Yeah. That doesn't include your ICX, which is your ADA compliant, which is also very, very costly. That also means that we would have to have at least three to four election inspectors hired for nine days straight on top of the ones we already have working at the precinct on election day. And I wrote down some of those costs for you. But at the current rate, we are at eleven and thirteen dollars an hour, which is very, very low. Right now, the lowest I found other municipalities as I surveyed them was fifteen dollars an hour. And the minimum wage is actually now higher this year than what we're paying our people, which is at thirteen ten in Michigan. So in order to recruit these people that are going to have to work for ten days essentially plus attend training, um, I think we do need to bump it up to that fifteen dollars. Cause we are competing with other townships and other municipalities. I had to beg a guy to not take them rid of a township position because they were like, well, we're going to just take them. No, no, we really need you here. He's like, oh, okay, well, I guess do you need me? No, seriously, we really need you. And for the last couple of elections, we've had to use the list of people in Enom County that are interested in working in election and those people may or may not work. And a lot of them already have jobs. They're not going to take off, you know, two weeks of vacation to work in election. So we need to make it very attractive for people to work. We're going to have to provide really good training. It only requires four hours of training and I don't know if anybody has really looked at how elections work, which I almost have and definitely have. Uh, it's a lot, it's a lot to expect them to do. I have had people go through the training and quit immediately because they cannot, they cannot come and see how they're going to handle it. It is a lot. The technology required, we have now is a tabulator, it's an ICX, it's the closing procedures, it's the new laws. You know, we have people that, the challengers that sit there and watch and challenge your, um, your voters right there. I mean, they can sit there and watch what you're doing. So, I mean, they have so much going on and we're expecting this of them multiple days. So at the middle.
We have to have a polling place open nine days?
Yes, yes.
Really?
We don't, I don't know. Well, no, nine days in a row, so this would.
Nine actual voting days, but then you get set up and takedown?
Nope, so, okay. So it would start the Saturday, two Saturdays prior to the election. They have to work straight nine days till the Sunday before the election. Then we would have to set up the precinct up at the school and have a Tuesday voting day.
So that would, that's where the dwell payment, I got it.
So you can't just have people stop by city hall and fill in a ballot and turn it in?
That's not what we're, it would have to be an actual precinct.
So we would have to designate an additional precinct is what you're saying, Holly?
Correct.
Yep.
So whether that's at city hall, which doesn't have the security, like we don't have locking doors. My office isn't locked. Council chambers, you know, the front door locks, but nothing else, and you can just walk in there.
Right.
But we're toying with that option. Something that the state is offering is, and some county clerks are supporting is allowing our voters to go to the county seat to vote early. Which that's great, but you're disenfranchising our voters by having to drive an hour to vote early. Like why would bother? Or the township has, you know, asked me about working together on that. And while that's great, it does bring up security for our voters and our voters ballots. So we're relying on somebody else's facility.
Why can't they just mail?
Trustworthiness.
Why can't they just mail it in?
The law changed.
The law changed. The constitution changed.
The state mission constitution changed.
It's not even an option, you have to do this.
So like since to mail in?
Yes.
Or they can draw early someplace and actually vote as if the same way they would vote if they came under.
The actual election day. So it's like, it's like you.
What, nine election days?
Unfortunately. That proposal that was like.
We functioned by people showing up for election day for how many years? But, no.
So, um, so our, our biggest issues are obviously cost.
Yeah.
You're like next year alone, we have three elections scheduled.
So.
So at the minimum, you're at three thousand two hundred and forty for three people, which would be nearly impossible to run an election for eight hours with only three people. They would never be able to leave that. No lunch breaks, no nothing. The top end, it would be about four thousand three hundred and twenty times three elections. Plus what you're already paying on your election day, so you're going to have to pay that too. Does a lot more, it's like another, uh, ten people, so those two days. You know, you're likely to have deputy clerk overtime costs. The space needs and location would really have to be figured out because that's, that's going to be important. You have to be able to secure our, our equipment to make sure everything is, is not able to be tampered with, you know, at night or, you know, by anybody coming into city hall. Um, we're likely going to have to have extra supplies for conducting our daily elections. Whether we have to close out everything every single night has not been decided upon right now. They're bringing up legislation, but so much has not been worked out because nobody knows what to do. Frankly, it's a little scary because we're going to be starting, our, our next election is less than a year away. I think February twenty-seventh is now our next election date. So, and we have to start months before that and planning is, it's, it's very concerning. They're talking new EPB, you know, that computer that everybody checks in on, like they would have to really revamp that software. And doing something like that requires a lot of training for clerks, for inspectors and everything. So the way it's going to work out is very up in the air and, um, very concerning right now. Some issues that we have, you know, with recruiting election inspectors, you know, they get sick. During the August election, all of my AV county board was exposed to COVID the Thursday before the election. Thankfully, no, we got it, but it could have completely wiped us out of our AV county board. They take vacations, they get election burnout, intimidation is a big thing. You had people standing outside intimidating our voters and, you know, um, video recording them as they were going in and out. Training, you know, these guys only work so many days a year on this thing, like, and we expect them to know like this much stuff and remember it every so often. It's very technology driven and a lot of times we get retirees that aren't necessarily computer savvy or, you know, know what to do with this stuff. So we're definitely, um, going to have some problems with that. A lot of them that we've gotten from the state are obviously employed elsewhere, so they already have jobs. They probably don't come here for that many days. We also have costs for election inspector food and beverages. Training is required for every election inspector, four hours plus three day mileage. The extra testing would have to be done. And I think we would have to at least get another tabulator because we are on the brink of having to split our precincts back into two. We are like at a really tight threshold right now. You can only have two thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine voters per precinct. The state has not changed it. We have asked many, many times to up that, that number for us because we have so many options now. You have permanent AV, um, you have now this nine extra days of in-person voting and election day. But so far, nothing. Also required in that proposal is that the state or that every return envelope has to have prepaid postage. So, yeah, like so all those people that just dropped theirs off, it's just wasted postage out of the way. But the state is now required to pay for that postage. However, I submitted a grant in October to the state for reimbursement and I'm still waiting for reimbursement from October. So we're still going to upfront those costs. And based on our last election, we mailed out one thousand one hundred and fourteen absentee ballots. That number is likely to decrease significantly, but it's going to take a lot of time for educating our voters that the nine days now is an option. So that's going to take a lot of time. But just the return envelopes postage is six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty cents per election. If we have to free stamp all of the returns. So each tabulator has to be, and that's where you put your ballot in. It's, it's required to be tested and sealed and then it has to not be touched after the election is conducted. Well, we can't just take that same tabulator and take it up to our precinct on election day. We're likely going to have to have another one. And if we have AV county board that's to be tabulated, you currently don't have to. So that comes into play with the six thousand, six hundred and three dollars just for a tabulator. Now the ICX may be able to be transported back and forth because it doesn't count anything. So that may at least save us a little bit. But this is, it is a, a significant increase in our election costs that is largely unfunded and, but is mandated out in our constitution. We don't have a lot of wiggle room. I feel like if I tell our voters like, sorry, no, we're, we're not going to let you vote here, you're going to have to go to Mason to vote. They're going to be like, well, Lansing doesn't require there to be a lot of, whatever you said about it, ultimate and, you know, that, that could be very difficult to tell our voters, you can't vote in their time.
Can we break it apart and say, instead of nine days, we're going to do three here?
It has to be the nine, nine days.
And some of those hours are already mandated at, to start at seven AM on a certain number of days. And some hours are mandated to be seven PM as an end time on some of those days. So you're going to have a different. No, it's eight hour shift.
Eight hour shift.
But it has to be different like all these days.
So some days.
Mandated by whom?
The state. Dislocation, which is now being written to.
So some days at seven AM.
Some days it would open seven AM.
So when is. At seven AM on a particular, it's now been seven PM that day.
So it's close, like eight hours after seven AM.
So Holly, you'd have to have, you'd have to have a tabulator, let's say we, let's say we find different places for all of our meetings during that nine day period and.
Which would really be complicated.
Right. And so city hall becomes it, we spend money for locks on doors so we can secure council chambers, obviously, and, and do whatever we need to, you know, windows, so. But that tabulator would stay there for the, the setup, the nine days of voting. And then would that tabulator then move over to the gymnasium? That would stay there through election day. It would be its own separate. Right, it would just stay there. So you have the new tabulator, let's say that's in, in city council chambers. Would you only need one tabulator?
That's what I'm expecting right now.
And then for voting day? Now, early, early mail-in ballots, can you use the tabulator in city hall that's available for in-person voting for the mail-in ballots?
No.
So then you.
If you had an AV county board.
Okay.
Which we may or may not need, we don't, we don't know that either. There's so many unknowns that we're kind of guessing right now and we spend hours on this, literally every single year I've gone to, hours trying to figure out what to do.
So ideally, and I'm not talking dollar amounts and stuff, but ideally, how many tabulators does the city of Williamson need to have moving forward?
At least three at a minimum.
And we have two right now?
Yes. And I, some people have even more, but then you come across storage.
Right.
Where are we going to store the thing? Because our election room is very small.
Right.
That we store everything in and we rent it from the middle school.
Right, okay.
So it's off-site too. We also have the problem with ADA compliance in city hall. Our polling locations all have to be ADA compliant. And I don't know that our city hall is, the doorways at least, I do not think are ADA compliant. We'd have to check. But it would have to go through that whole process of, you know, measuring everything to make sure it's all.
It's a big obstacle.
Yes. It is, and it, it doesn't give us a lot of time to fix anything because it has to be implemented by the next federal election.
So what's, what's kind of the total dollar figure if we had to do, what kind of worst case scenario?
Are you talking like additional workers, tabulators?
Rates are, you know.
Right.
I mean, we're looking at.
The tabular.
It's about twenty thousand dollars.
I was thinking twelve, fifteen grand.
For the tabular, about thirteen for the additional cost of people. That doesn't include fixing up city hall.
Mine is what we already spent. I'm curious what the increase is, like twelve, fifteen grand or something? I was just curious, I guess it doesn't really matter right now.
I'm telling you that every year it, it has increased significantly just because of the hours involved in the, in the supplies involved.
It seems pretty heavy.
Well, and there's gonna be, there's gonna be years where there's multiple elections, there'll be primaries, there'll be school boards. I mean, you know, so.
It's kinda like COVID though, makes you feel a little better than everybody's feeling about it.
Yeah.
At least we don't have to buy like ten tabulators.
The problem with these, these proposals is they're written by people that do not work this stuff.
Right.
They don't have a clue how this happens, how things work, and so they don't really care. Like, they're just like, well, we wanna give our people this opportunity. Well, that's all well and fine, but you have to remember there's so many townships out there that do not have buildings, they do not have secure spaces, they do not have any compliance. They're tiny, they go, they work out of their house.
Can't afford it.
And that's exactly, they can't afford it.
So, why ask them if you just don't do it?
Yes.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, what are they gonna do? Like, we can't afford it, sorry, we're not doing it.
So, it's an unfunded mandate though, so not complying with an unfunded mandate is not, it's just.
It's in the constitution, that's the thing, they put it in the constitution, it's not like, oh, it's just legislation, you can change it. It's not at all, it's in the constitution, so they knew what they were doing when they did this proposal to make sure that it didn't really go anywhere.
So, I'm, I'm going back to your election worker stuff where we're talking about where we have been paying, uh, eleven to thirteen.
Eleven is right there.
And, you know, we're kind of in an arms race with all these other local municipalities that are in the same place. And I'm not throwing out a number currently, but I think there's a, there's a ton of training that has to go into this. We have to get people to want to do this and be here with us. I, I think moving to fifteen personally is probably on the low side because with all the, and I, I know we're already looking at having, having to spend a ton more money at this, but we have to have the people to do it.
But if you, but if you. And then fifteen is really your regular election center.
Right.
They usually pay more for the chair.
Right.
A lot of places have gone to like a bonus for the chair, like a lap fee. I kinda feel like it should be based per hour because if you have a chair those nine days, it might be a different chair every day.
Yeah.
Where I can't guarantee we have the same person every single day.
No, but, but I think Dan's right, we make it attractive enough that they'll want to come here and work. I mean, not, you know, below a budget.
Seventeen.
Out of the water, but, and it's a shorter period of time, it's, this isn't a full-time career for somebody. But to make it attractive so that we don't have problems or issues.
Well, and my, my other thought was, and I, I have no idea if this would work or whatever, but I, it's close enough to city hall, or i- is there, is there space in the police station? Or nine days or, you know?
Not, to keep them secure.
Right.
And unsecure, it wouldn't, it wouldn't work.
How about this room right here? Does ADA comply?
It's a possibility. When we were talking about that, I thought about.
Nine days, I have to say.
Well, yeah, because you do have that entry, that they could keep that shut or whatever, I mean, I don't know, it's something to think about.
And, and I, I had thought about, I have no idea, I know, a- and it's a, it's a private building now and all that, but.
The commons.
The commons. If there would be some room for negotiation on, you know, renting the, the gym back out or, or something like that. But that, they would, I have no idea what they charge for that place.
Definitely good stuff to keep discussing so that Holly doesn't stress.
Yes, it's very, very stressful and I can tell you that, um, just being on the MAMC board, um, having a couple more people now, I can tell you that we were probably the only small municipality on that board influencing decisions that are made by cities like Ann Arbor and Troy and, um, Mount Pleasant and East Lansing and everything, these are big cities and so, yeah, they can do this, they've probably got the budget, they've probably got the spaces. These small municipalities, we don't, but we didn't really have a big influence on the board. And now we have four people that we've gotten on the board and we said, hey, us little guys, they have a whole different scenario on this and we have problems.
I have a question kind of regarding this then, so this, this affects everybody, so even the little townships and stuff are gonna, and so, are we expecting they're gonna probably just say, we're not doing elections and we're gonna have an influx of people that have to come here to do them that's gonna raise our number?
They can't be registered here.
You have to be registered.
So, the only, if the only way we could do it is we could partner with somebody to allow us to run their elections if we have the manpower.
I just scale these little townships, it's gonna be basically an impossibility.
Sure, yep.
So, John, this.
Some of them can go to the county too, if their county wants to do it. I don't think it's gonna be mandated that the county has a, like a super voting area.
People might only have the option of a mail-in ballot.
No, they still have to do, they have to figure out how to pull off.
It's gonna be a big hurdle for a lot of people.
It is, and I, I do see a lot of clerks like, well, I think that's my time to retire. We're seeing that and that's scary because you're gonna have like a lot of municipal trying to implement a lot of changes that are gonna appear challenging.
The nine-day thing is in the constitution, so even if the people realize, oh shit, we're in a state because of the small county.
They have to go report the vote of the people, they have to change it.
They can't do it, they can't change it anyway.
So, the idea was to make voting more accessible, but what it's gonna come down to is, well, you have to go to the county seat to vote because it's the only place where we can read all these requirements.
The, the major voting blocks already have population that today, they don't care.
So, John, these.
Like, it's great for big ones, big municipalities, but.
It's written in there to work well.
So, these numbers are gonna be included in our budget workshops then, so will be.
Yeah, they'll have to be because we're looking, this is a twenty-three, twenty-four budget impact, so.
Yeah.
All right.
So.
Or we just say you have to go to the county to vote.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think.
Would you do that to your community?
I don't think, I don't think we'd do that.
And your residents and, and forced residents to go to the county?
And the county is.
I'm just asking.
I would, I would like to, but, I mean.
Well, it's not that they can't come here on election day, they only have to go there when it's early.
Yeah.
Right, if we didn't wanna provide nine days of straight voting, we could just say, no, sorry, can't do it and force everybody to drive to Ingham County over to Mason Courthouse.
For the nine-day thing, forcing them to vote in the county, that's not too tough at all.
I'm okay with that. If they choose to vote early, they drive to the county. If they wanna vote on election day as normal, they do it here.
Sure.
That's what I do.
I, I think it's definitely something we need to continue to discuss.
Yeah, it's, that's a, it's a tough one.
That's a tough one.
But rest assured, it's incumbent upon all of us to remind all, and again, it's a constitutional amendment and it was a ballot proposal, so. The people voting out, it wasn't, you know, our, our, our state house or state senate, but, but to continue to tell people that, you know, ballot language comes through on those things, you really need to think about it and do your research and.
What about the tax?
The, the application, we kinda need to move on, but that was, I know it was a, you know, it's a, just give you some idea, the idea of some of the, some of the challenges in particular, clerks are facing all across the state.
Sure.
Um, big picture though, but if, how much of the change is it if we do this thing where we say, yes, you can vote for the nine days ahead of time and all that, but if you wanna do that, it has to happen at the county seat, they're gonna take care of all that, they'll fund that. We're gonna do the regular kind of lock-in election on election day, which is the normal thing, we'll have a normal amount of dollars and cents and so, but maybe a little bit more because of the pay increases. But the nine-day thing, which is the extraordinary part, that's gonna happen only at the county seat. If we go with that option, how much extra money would that be?
I don't know. I'm gonna not tell you because.
Cause the county's gonna charge a stack, right?
I don't know that right now, that's the thing, like, we don't, we don't know hardly.
I think to Holly, Sam, that's a lot of the problem, trying to go too far into the decision tonight is the state's, anytime they come out with something like this, it's a significant change. They're still trying to figure out how it's gonna be implemented, you know, in the months going forward, so who knows what they may change or.
They got a lot more options now than they ever did before. You got nine days per hour, you got mail-in, you got.
The legislation right now is sixteen pages long.
But the other thing, the other thing I think we have to remember too is that we're now gonna rely on the county to make sure that our vote is correct for our community. And that you don't get handed the wrong ballot because they're managing multiple municipalities at the county level.
And my, my question with the. For you, right?
I.
And I don't know that Holly could even answer this, but if you send our voters, the ones that wanna vote nine, for nine days early to the county, then is Holly and our, our, our election workers on election night responsible for reconciling all those numbers and whatever else?
Sure.
And how do, how does she figure it out?
Then are we gonna get all the ballots back? I mean, you know, there's so many different scenarios that you can play with right now, but.
That's way too much for us to try and figure out.
So, I gave you some, um, written document to kind of just peruse a little bit, but you can always reach out with any questions, obviously, probably.
So, you waited two hours to land that out?
She had to wait her turn.
Great, and wait her turn.
Oh, yeah, that's a good one.
Holly, about, you have anything to add as far as department updates?
Uh, I'll keep mine really short and light and just high-octane, I guess, and all of it. You know, I guess the big thing I see is, is good, I mean, when, it's challenging for a treasurer to come in or finance director, treasurer to come to something like this and try to, you know, give some glorious presentation because we all have, you know, high-speed chases or, you know, fancy water main brakes or anything, you know, helping people do things, you know, we're kind of bored. If we do break something to you, it's usually bad, right? You know, you're just so, you know, losing money or whatever, so, but, but what I can say, Matt, that will help me make this short is, I am very content here with things I have seen on our financial position. I told John earlier, I said this will be the first time where the budget's actually gonna be a, well, those parts I enjoy, but I mean, it's just gonna be so much easier on this particular budget, I know, because our revenues have maintained steady growth, I'm sure they're gonna continue that with the real estate market and stuff the way they are. The state's been gracious enough and, and they're doing well with our budget that we're continuing to see, uh, you know, it's minimal, but we're still seeing growth and revenue sharing and stuff, so. You know, it, it is what it is when you come to the budget and, and, you know, you see what your revenue numbers are and learn to work within them. And I think the refreshing thing here is that's not gonna be near as challenging or difficult here from what I've been used to for the last fifteen point years. And also, John kinda alluded to this earlier too, the, the environment here is just so much better, um, everybody having the visions and kinda at least looking forward and positive, you know, it's just, it's gonna make it lots of around budget stuff, so. Trying to sum it up, but I'll take a lot of time, I mean, I, you know, as people got questions, I mean, I'm very, I'm very happy with what I see in the financial positions of Williamson. Of course, I looked into that quite a bit, you know, when I made the decision to come back, you know, it's, it's set in a pretty good spot financially, you know. Every city has the challenges of infrastructure going bad and honestly, um, I think hers are a lot less pricing than what some communities have, you know, and I think they've done a pretty good job keeping things going, you know, instead of kicking the can down the road. And it's a lot better here than, a lot of cities I've talked to what they're dealing with now, so. If that helps offset Holly's bench, I mean, I have, I think it was pretty positive.
Correct the auditor, your auditors didn't find any, right?
No.
Isn't that, don't they usually like find one or two things?
No, we've, we've had almost impeccable audits, I won't say that, I'm not, but we are so financially sound and, and we get, you know, whatever it is that she says, favorable rating since I came on council in fifteen, I mean, our audits have been spot on. And it speaks volumes for this staff, it really does.
So, we get lower interest rates if we have to borrow money then? I mean, does it, does it?
If we start looking at bonds, we definitely, but you, you'll get a bond rate, right? And we'll definitely get another one.
That's a good thing.
And then it is, it reflects back on your interest rates.
This is twenty fifteen, is it?
Yeah, I got voted in in twenty fifteen, we've always had fantastic audits, yeah.
Chief, anything that you have, you can say that you haven't already said?
No, I'm good on that part, so.
Yeah, yeah, Holly, you can go to, you can go to this cabinet. Big career change for Holly.
I'm still probably gonna teach you on your recommendations, I appreciate that.
I'm good. We talked a lot about streets and utilities, Scotty thing, yeah, I mean, we did add a, a, a staff, what didn't add, we, we filled a vacant position and I think he's doing, our new person's doing really well, so. Do you have anything else to add up court wise?
Not a whole lot, I mean, you guys know that there's tens of millions of dollars in the water system, the wastewater system, the roads, all the other facilities. It, it's tough discussions when it comes to rates and things like that, and we're doing everything we can to try and, you know, right-size everything. So, you know, there's lots of big projects coming this year, um, and you're gonna see like the Zimmer and, and mechanic street stuff that should go to bed here pretty soon too, don't forget about that, it's a new wastewater project. And we got a lot of stuff in the works and it's, it takes a lot of time to deal with all that stuff, so. All the support's appreciated for, for everything. We didn't get into all the many details that we've done in previous planning sessions with this, but the information's there. And if you ever have questions, feel free to say, hey, I want more explanation on something, so.
Thank you. On the DDA and TIPA side, uh, DDA is really getting to the point where most of their funds are, are committed, whether it's through debt service or through sort of the outgoing annual maintenance things, uh, and that's a good thing. Really, the focus is gonna be moving forward in the next fiscal year is the, the marketing and working, you know, partnership with the chamber and other entities to continue to, uh, enhance downtown. I think we have a really good board, I like the direction that we're heading. TIPA is a little different, um, you know, it's a, it's a, I think folks maybe know as much about TIPA as, as, as maybe, um, we should, but their big project in front of them is the Ice House and that redevelopment and, and that's, uh, moving forward really well. I think that the site plan's, uh, pretty, pretty cool, um, and so, what we're gonna have to talk about the long term is like the TIPA and how long we keep that active. It's a lot different than the DDA, um, and, and we have a TIPA plan and hopefully I'll look at that and I'm not gonna go over that chapter and verse, but at some point, it'll logically make sense to, to, to close the TIPA, because there is, there is amount of, of general fund revenue that's captured just in that district, same with the DDA. But those funds can be put back into the general fund. We're not in a point of, uh, you know, again, we're in fantastic financial shape and that's a credit, you know, I can take a small amount of credit because I've, you know, been through one budget, but it's a credit to all of you, on the staff level and also the elected officials, you've, you've, you know, done good projects, um, you know, you're, you're, we're, we're below staff, but as far as like head council, we're, we're adequate. Head council overall, we need to fill some big positions in the police department, but we've kept the, uh, you know, the cost of government out here as low as we can. And I know it's always a concern, where are we, how do we compare with other communities, but, um, anyway, so those are the updates for that. One thing that's not really on this slide, but we need to talk about, this'll be presented to all of you as we move forward, all of our service providers, whether it's the auditor, planning, two different law firms, um, it's time that we go through at least a whole process for those, for all of them. Most of them are great, um, all of them are at least adequate or they wouldn't still be working here because I would have moved on from them even this short time in a year, but. And that's just something that you do, and it doesn't mean you, you know, we wouldn't hire Gormley or hire Cole Stoker and Taski again, um, but we need to look at those service providers and, and think about, you know, are we getting the right service and is it cost-effective?
It's a fair exercise.
Yep.
It is.
Yep.
I mean, you know, my first year in council, we made the decision to, you know, minimize the use of McKenna because we wanted a cost savings. You know, we did a fantastic job by moving over to Livingston County.
Right.
For building permits and, and saved that amount of money, um, so it's, it's a fair exercise and if you do it the right way, they will understand. And I'm sure they have other municipalities that do this, um, as far as Gormley and, and Cole Stoker, Taski. I mean, they have the, they have the historical knowledge of working with the municipality for a long time and, and I value that. But, you know, I'm sure they have other municipalities that.
Sure.
That go through these exercises too.
I did have a council member express their concern about. I did have a council member express their concern about the amount of, of our legal bills.
Sure.
I was asked point-blank, is that normal? And I would say it's not, it's not normal for community our size. And I know there was, you know, a time historically where there was a desire, I, I will tell you it's very unique to have this, uh, city attorney sitting to my lap that's not on staff for everything, that's rare. If that's a priority for all of you, fine, cause Cole Stoker and Taski is a fantastic plumber. They're as good as it gets for municipal law firms and, and Tim does a really good job, but I can tell you that it's, it's not, that's not a normal thing. Because what comes with that is the preparation time to review the packet and the time, and that's, there's a cost to that, so. They're not gouging us. The price we pay for what we're asking them to do is fair, but overall, from an overall scheme of things for community our size, without right now any significant legal challenges or issues, it's not, it's not. It's, it's, it's somewhat of a luxury right now to have that much legal service, so. Just, again, it's not a knock on their, their company or, or Tim, cause he does a good job, but, so. Um, it kind of brings us towards, towards the end, um, just to, uh, you know, throw things out. If there's anything that, um, we didn't cover tonight, and again, in these sessions, you can't cover everything, you, you can't. And, and my goal with these is always to try and, you know, keep on a higher level, keep on a, a higher overview without getting too far into the, into the, the details of any one particular thing, so. Just kind of throw it out to, to council members or staff, if you have anything that, uh, you know, you see that we didn't, you know, that's glaring that we didn't list as a priority for the coming year.
So I, I think the only thing that I would throw out, and, um, this will probably come up as our future work session, but obviously, we just talked about, um, facility needs, uh, based on needing nine days, um, for election uh, equipment and, and the secure election equipment. And I know that, John, you and I have kind of thrown out around some ideas and stuff, but, um, will we have a work session dedicated to City Hall? And, and will that be sooner rather than later?
Yeah, it, it will. Um, you know, we had one since I've been here and, you know, the, 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 there's always a competing needs of, we have some pretty significant utility projects coming up and it's in the public. It's difficult for them to differentiate between, you know, you're raising my sewer rates, why are you building a new city office?
Right.
But then there also comes to the point, we have managed our resources well here on the general fund side, and there is, there is a solution, I think, that's out there that's affordable for us. Um, right, I haven't liked some of the answers that I got back from some of the local contractors, so I'm kind of expanding that a little bit.
Okay.
But th- there's definitely some things that need to be done in our existing council chamber, um, to modernize it and even, even beyond the election stuff. I mean, that's, that's a part of it certainly, but the short answer to that is, yeah, we will have that work session. It's not a ridiculous day.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to throw out that, um, I would like to have a, a tree, topic of trees, I had to do a discussion out of a time point. I have a concern, I have had for quite a while about, uh, there's no replacement and a lot of trees are done. And so, as you look across the cityscape, you can see spaces now where there's just no trees.
Are you talking Grand River specific, like empty?
I'm just talking about the cities as a whole, I know, I'm reading, uh, Middle Street, back where the, um, uh, I can't remember, maybe you're over there, it was spot on Middle Street. Before I became a council, I was gonna take a picture, I was gonna bring it in here and challenge it all, but now I'm here.
Bring it in.
I don't have to do that. Anyway, I have a concern about trees. I like, trees that are important, I think, for a variety of reasons. I would like to see us have a discussion. I don't know where everybody's at.
Sure.
Um, I just wanted to see it out of the discussion center.
I know that, um, when Corey was city manager, um, and I, I think this actually happened during COVID, didn't it, Dan? When we talked about Grand River tree replacement and a variety of trees, cause we do have some empty spots on this Grand River proper. But yeah, I mean, that's probably not a, a bad idea to look, you know, overall right away and, and what we can do as a, a city. So yeah, I would, I would support having that out there.
I planted two trees in my yard.
Yeah, I did.
They planted a bunch of Williamson township.
Yeah, at, at the park, but that was, that was a giant grant. I mean, they're planting a whole forest.
Yeah, but, yeah, they are planting a whole forest out there.
Looking at.
We'll discuss those sometime.
Yeah.
Any, anything else?
I guess, um, one thing I've been, I've been thinking about some that comes up occasionally, but the, the old tennis courts over by Memorial Park over there, just, and it, and it doesn't have to be immediate or whatever, but coming up with a plan for what's gonna happen over there. Whether it's refurbishing them again so they can be useful tennis courts again, or, but, or what, what are we gonna, what are we gonna do with that?
Yeah.
Well, isn't, aren't the tennis courts kind of encompassed in the whole Honor for All Memorial Park plan? And so I think probably at some point we need to, I don't know if Kent needs to come in and have a presentation again. I know he's got, um, volunteers that are gonna come in and do the heavy lifting as far as, I don't know if it includes demoing that, but, um, I know that is part of that park plan.
Yeah, so that, that's making its way through parks and the Bob Ford from L A P presented the preliminary design plan for the memorial that way, Honor for All is part of that. And the plan, the preliminary plan, again, as I explained to Bob and Earl and Parks is that, you know, you have to come up with your best idea and then ultimately it gets approved by council. But the preliminary plan has those being removed and then a small parking lot. You just can't really park on it because of, you know, who knows what the base is like now, it's been vacant for so long. But that is, that is the, the short entirety of it is that they would be removed and a small parking lot would be there.
That makes sense. I, I wasn't sure, I knew we had Scout Island and everything encompassed in that. It's been a while since I've looked at Ken's plan, so.
So what happens next, I mean, we, we've been doing internal meetings with the departments for budget and we had our visiting session today. Um, we will have a utility rate discussion in April, uh, second meeting in April. Uh, we'll have our budget work sessions in May. A public hearing will take place at the second meeting in May and then the budget gets adopted. New fiscal year starts in July, and then any utility rate adjustments we have would be effective in the July bills and people would get that in, in August. So that's how the, the budget cycle maps out from here, and most of the things that we talked about tonight have some sort of budgetary impact and they'll be discussed as we move forward. And again, the idea is to present the concepts so that when we get into budget sessions, you, you've heard of these things before, heard of these concepts, then the numbers put toward, towards it in the, in the budget, um, for the hearing and then, um, you know, it's adopted, so. That's the process. And things that, as we, you know, wrap up here, things to think about, like, I know this is Wednesday, we were here from six till almost eight forty-five. Um, I'm not opposed to doing a session like this on the weekend, some groups like to do that, some don't. I prefer to have it during the week. And, and the format, I mean, if you want more, if you want less, just think about those things while, you know, the meeting's still somewhat fresh in your mind, so. All right, thank you.
Thanks. Hey Scott, how'd your water management department go?